All right. Good evening and welcome to the Plans and Zone Commission for July 20th, 2022. Can I have the roll call, please?
Adam here.
Here.
Danaway.
Here.
Kapler.
Ormsby.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wenland.
Here. Okay, thank you. We had minutes from the meeting of June 15th, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from June 15th, 2022. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Okay, thank you. The minutes from June 15th, 2022 are approved. So, good evening and welcome everyone again. I see a number of folks in the audience. We'd be more than happy to hear your input on a particular case at the appropriate time. We are a recommending body appointed by the mayor and city council to review site plans, zoning changes and things and such. So what we do here is not a final deal, but it's a recommending motion to the city council for final approval. But at the appropriate time, I will recognize people at the podium to my right and to your left back there so we can pick up your name, address, and input on a particular case. So with that, we will begin.
Mr. Chairman, our first case tonight is 22047. It's a rezoning from A1 to R3 south of Hopewell Avenue and west of Criswell Street. The area outlined here in Aqua essentially is the parcel. It's 17.75 acres. It's split between urban medium intensity and urban light intensity. At one time, the future land use maps had indicated that there would be commercial further south for an anticipated connection with 53rd Avenue and Criswell Street, and that never did occur due to the topography being so rugged. That connection could not occur, and that was going to be a strictly commercial-type use area. And then further to the north, later on, you'll be discussing the Forest Green addition. That area also was considered to be a, or is considered to be part commercial. What happened is essentially that this got blended with the type of residential uses, the area that was anticipated for commercial at the 53rd Criswell connection. That got moved up to this area. So that's essentially how this showed up on the comp plan, the future land use map of the comp plan. So that's basically why you see this split here. The area surrounding here is R2 to the south, further to the south, Century Heights 22nd. And then you have R2, R3 here, Forest Green, and then R2 further up. The remaining area here throughout is A1, and then you have R1 further over here in another Century Heights addition.
Hey Greg, I'm just gonna pause for just a second, just for the people in the audience. I assume you know, but you always get in trouble when you assume. There's no zoning and land use representations east of Criswell because Criswell is outside the city of that north limits, just for clarification. So that's why the map looks different on the east side. Okay, so go ahead.
The concept plan shows essentially the four-plex development further to the east as one would anticipate given Hopewell and Criswell. And the higher traffic count is where you would see the greater concentration of more dense uses. In looking at this, the petitioner has it as 4.56 units per acre. If you were to take the portion here and make this only eight acres out of this, and I ran some totals just to see what would occur, given that what you can see from the land use, future land use map, that more of this than eight acres is actually in the UMI. If you were to just take this area and make it eight acres and then have 48 units total, and that means these duplex units here, which there are four, and then these over here, which there are 11 four-plexes, and then, I believe, two single-family units, you would still be under the top threshold for ULI, which is two to seven, eight, two to seven units per acre. So even then, in the highest concentration area where this housing is situated, it still is below the standard. It doesn't even come up to the UMI standard, which is seven to 12 units per acre. Staff in evaluating this proposal felt that it met the standards as elicited in 111513B in the zoning ordinance. There's also precedence for zoning R3 next to R2 and also R4 next to R2, and also R1. It is not uncommon, as we've seen in the Wyndham Villas with R4 up against R2, the Meadows where we had R3 up against an area zoned R1 and R5, and then Quail Hollow where we have R2 and R3 zoning split up against R1, and then Forest Green, which we'll be discussing tonight, which is zoned R3 against R2 to the further to the west. So this is not something that is out of the norm, what is being requested here. And based on that, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you Greg, appreciate it. And then just one other, so we don't speak in code to you guys, ULI, urban light intensity, UMI, urban medium intensity. If that wasn't said, I didn't catch. So Mark, anything since publication, and Greg, that you want to focus?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. We have a busy agenda tonight. And another case just north of this property, actually boarding this property, will be brought to you tonight for development with church and related school. So something to keep in mind as you, as you have your discussion, do your deliberation tonight. Also, I would note Forest Green is probably a similar project. Again, just two parcels to the north now. Forest Green is probably a similar project, and I would remind the commission that we did make that a conditional zoning. That's not in our recommendation tonight, but might be worth your discussions as well.
Okay, appreciate that. All right, thank you. Questions and comments from the commission at this point regarding this matter?
Down here.
One here? One here? You guys are easy tonight. One of the things I look at is Criswell, and I know we've had some discussions about Criswell. Now we're seeing a lot of development. I'm gonna look over at Brent for a minute. Tell us about the plan for Criswell, or the not plan for Criswell, and CIP, Construction in Process, and where all that stands, because we've got a lot coming on this segment of town right now.
Sure. So we have currently programmed in our CIP, that's our Community Improvement Program, basically our capital budget. We have resurfacing, so it's actually a full-depth reclamation is what we call it. But basically, it's what we did to Forest Grove Drive four years ago. You chew up the existing Seal Code street and then put an asphalt-wearing surface on that. That is scheduled for 2024 right now. Fortunately, that's a million-and-a-half-dollar project. Don't have an additional million-and-a-half that's available on the budget next year. I would like to bring it forward. Don't have the money available. The other half is that half of that is the county, so we have to work through that as well and make sure they have their funds programmed. So that is currently scheduled for 2024.
Okay, thank you. One else? Okay, I'll look at the audience. Anyone that would like to provide comment or input with regard to this matter? First one gets to go cheaper. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 22-047, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case 22-047. One thing I'd like to maybe look at modifying that motion would be, Mark had mentioned the conditional concept of the approval. And one of the things we've looked at as we've considered some of these, this is not a final site plan, but I would like to make in my modified recommendation, the motion subject to the zoning being conditionally changed, conditioned upon the site plan that's ultimately approved being material, materially the same as what we're looking at here. And that, that being, if we move it all to R3 and somebody else comes in and they say, now they can put multifamily all the way across, I think we're, we're approving it at the change in the zoning based on what we're seeing here. And I'd like it tied to that pretty tightly.
I would agree.
I appreciate that a lot.
All right, good. So we're, we're in agreement that we'll modify the motion to additional, additional provision that it will be conditional, that it's materially the same as the concept site pan, site plan that we've been provided. Any other input, Mark?
My Robert's rules are rusty, but I think you might want to make a motion to add that condition to the motion that's on the table.
I would make a motion that we add the provision to-
I'm not an attorney right now.
Maybe someday. Make the modification, the additional motion that we modify the first motion to add that this is conditional on the final site plan being materially similar to the one that's presented this evening. And I think, thank you, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And in favor of the other initial motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay. Motions one and two relative to 22047 are approved and recommended for approval. Okay, Greg? Oh, we switch hitters. All right.
Chairman, next case before you is case 22-041. This is a request for rezoning on a parcel east of Crestview Heights subdivision. Shown on the map, the parcel in question, this is just one lot, one unplatted parcel. The applicant is Bill Pender, who's the owner of the parcel. His request is to rezone the lot from A1 to A2. So A1 is our agricultural district, and A2 is our rural residential district. The proposed use is a future single-family home. I believe he intends to prepare for sale for a future development of one, one home. As mentioned, this is unplatted, and is not included in the platted lots to the west, which are all part of Crestview Heights. The current zoning is A1. Crestview Heights is all located in A2. This is on the southern banks of, and western banks of Crow Creek. So this is a very wooded area. Bluffs there as well. Currently in A1, minimum lot size for A1 would be five acres. This does not conform to that standard. The minimum lot size for an A2 is 15, typo there, 15,000 square feet, which equates to .34 acres. A2 also connects septic and well on the property. I do not believe sewer is available on this site, so septic would be permitted. Water, I'm not sure about, but those would both be permitted for this type of, in this zoning district. The future land use map shows this area as urban low intensity, so it's our lowest intensity for residential. The requested A2 zoning would be permitted and consistent with this future land use designation, and also consistent with our comprehensive plan. I will mention to the north, as shown on the aerial, is the creek bed, Crow Creek, and some larger parcels that Silver Spur Road, off of Silver Spur Road, and then across Crow Creek, those are shown as Greenway and Parks. They might have a dwelling on it, but they're very large parcels, and do not plan to develop in the near future. Currently, this, the applicant has submitted one requirement of a rezoning like this. This does not have a platted easement with the Crestview Heights subdivision access, but there is a access agreement that was signed by the applicant. Document, this is recorded in 1985, so it's document number 18076-85. Shown is just the plat of survey that was attached with the agreement. There are, is also legal description, which can be viewed online or with request. It's also included in your packet. This shows the easement going across a unplatted lot to the west, two unplatted lots to the west, and then connecting to the far eastern lot boundaries of Lot 1 of Crestview Heights, and then the Crestview Heights road easement. This is Crestview Heights subdivision. This was platted in 1965. The plat includes a 30-foot roadway and utility easement extending to the boundary of Lot 1, which would connect to that access agreement. Given the, the plat note, plat notes, and then the access agreement, we, staff would contend that this has access. We will, staff will also contend this, these are both private, will be privately maintained. Crestview Heights is a private road maintained by a private owners, homeowners, owners association. So any agreements and any type of, or disagreements, as far as access goes, would have to be worked out between those two parties. They're not public right-of-ways, so the city would not go on his side. And I will note the plat for Crestview Heights, the lots are about the same dimensions as were platted in 1965. Under our rezoning considerations per our zoning code, we look at whether it conforms to the future land use map, has any potential negative externalities, and amongst other things, including if it's in the public interest and not only solely in the interest of the applicant. Staff contends it meets all these seven considerations and would recommend approval of this request.
Okay, thank you Taylor, appreciate that. Mark, anything else since publication?
Just a couple of things to draw your attention to, Mr. Chairman. One is that the existing lot, and this is kind of in the staff report, is, is a legal but non-conforming lot. So it is not the right size to be an A1 lot. Five acres is our A1 minimum requirement, and this lot is much smaller than that. So your action tonight, your recommendation tonight would help bring this lot into a conforming status, which is just generally beneficial for the city to have conforming lots that conform with our zoning. And then the other thing Taylor talked about is that any questions relative to access easements and agreements that are done privately are handled by private parties and handled through a court. That's not within the jurisdiction of the city or this body.
Okay, thank you. Questions and comments from the commission regarding this matter?
A question, Mark, maybe to you. To access this, there needs to be an agreement. Is there assurances that there, such an arrangement can be set up?
So there's an agreement in place that's recorded with the county, and that's been provided to staff. We take those at face value. Again, if there is some land dispute here about rights and privileges that go with that agreement, those would need to be handled through a court, not through the city, as it is not our property.
And the other question is, what's the current use of this lot?
It is, it is undeveloped at this point. The proposed use would be a single-family home.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, there are some encumbrances on the property, and you can see these on the aerial. There is a power line running right here, and I've not seen an easement for that, but there's likely a power line, an easement for that. We restrict building there. And then there is, I did not show a map, it was very minor, but there's floodplain, I'd say right in that area, and down here. So your building envelope, or your available building location's going to be in this area.
Thanks Taylor.
And then zoning would provide 40-foot setbacks, and there would be variable locations within that footprint.
And it looks like the current Crestview Heights Drive terminates pretty close to maybe a third of the way through the Benjamin Rupee Lot and Edward Merritt Lot. It doesn't, or maybe halfway through. It does not go all the way through now then, correct?
Correct.
Somebody's nodding back there.
I was able to visit the site, and currently, you can tell, and I can probably zoom in here too.
Yeah, we go.
The paved portion of the road, as we would call it, a private road, ends right here where the, or at this area. And then you have driveways, another driveway. This is an undeveloped lot, so I believe it's Charlene Merritt, Edward Merritt, own both of these lots. And their house is on one, and there's an undeveloped one to the east. So if all agreements were worked out, the applicant with the submitted agreements or access easement would likely need, would be permitted to and put a private driveway connecting to those. There would not be, extension of the street would not be Meredith just for one additional single.
Okay. All right, thank you. Others in the commission?
I was just gonna comment, and you touched on it already, Taylor. The, you mentioned the utility pole and the floodplain shown on there, and why this is necessary, where you'd have space to put a house. I just wanted to say, I appreciated that. It helped clarify it.
Would the street need to go through if the Merits decided to sell off that other lot and build a house?
I'll touch for Brent on this. I think, how many lots-
Again, we have no jurisdiction for it. It's a private roadway, so there, it exists only in easement. The city does not maintain it, and it doesn't exist in right-of-way.
So the fire department, there isn't any regulations anywhere in there that come into play?
I think, yeah, I think what, what you might be thinking of, Commissioner Stoltenberg, is when we have a new development, and if they want to propose private roads, we have some restrictions on those going forward. Pre-existing developments and pre-existing agreements made by property owners prior to our zoning ordinance are out of our hands.
Thank you.
But whatever they do agree upon, and if they built an access road back there, it would have to be, meet city standards.
Only if there were additional lots, only if we-
Only if it is, okay.
Only if we hit that three lot, which would then be subsequent to what's existing now.
Whatever their agreement allows, and what they build is what they build.
Yeah, they would probably propose just a driveway, not a road, because this is just a driveway from a property to a private easement that they've negotiated at some point in history.
So you're saying that access agreement on Attachment D is what shows that there's, that's already a document in place that they're able to access through that space?
Correct. Taken at face value, that's what-
From what, yeah, just from what's shown.
Again, we're not designing a road or a subdivision here. We're just looking at the zoning. That's a mitigating factor, but not a deciding factor, I would say.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Others on the commission? Okay, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Okay, you win. You're first, young lady. All right. I gotta get you back at the podium with the mic.
Where do I need to go?
Back, back in the back of the room there by the camera and the mic. Tell us who you are, and then we'll love to hear from you.
Where you live.
And where you live.
Hi, my name's Mindy Williams, and I live at 2975 Elk Drive in Bettendorf. Elk Drive is the private road that goes up onto Crestview Heights. There's no access out of there. They're both private roads. First of all, I wanted to say, I left this morning to go to work to see your sign for the first time at the beginning of our addition. It's so small, you have to park and get out and get your glasses to read it. I called down here to find out what was going down, on, because didn't really understand. They said they sent some letters out for some of the people on Crestview Heights. Now, they said like a week or two ago. My neighbor over here just got his letter yesterday. I had two phone calls on my way driving down here that no one got letters on Crestview Heights. That was kind of a little nerve-wracking. So I guess my only question is, as I looked into this, I understand now what's going on. I understand now you're just, it's zoning. But as I looked in, and I left my glasses back there, because I'm, as I looked in, in 2009, William Pender bought this property. It is 1.33 acres. And I guess my biggest question is, in 2009, on a land without access, for 1.33 acres, why did he pay $350,000 for that property? You only listed at $19,000 at today's market value. Something's not right here. So I read him further, and it says on there, adjacent land has been adjoining, he bought two, and abnormal, whatever that means. So I checked adjacent properties, and some of them are LLCs. And I guess I'm nervous as to what's kind of going on, because who would buy that property for 353,000 in 200, in 2009? And so I'm wondering, is there, is there gonna be access made? Is this gonna be rezoned? And then after it is, somehow there's gonna be more land that's in somebody else's LLC, that now we're gonna have a subdivision going through our private property. Just a question that, and actually only a couple hours, that I've had to look through anything to figure, to find this out. So I'm just a little nervous. I've got everything I own in my property, and I'm just kind of tired of certain things happening in the neighborhood that are bringing it down.
So I'll kind of work backwards if I can, and I'll look for staff if I don't fill in, in the blanks. But regarding the notice, there's specific provisions in the code that stipulate what the notice requirements are, and it's so many feet, and I want to say it's 200. So from the code perspective, the only ones that get notified by mail are within 200 feet of the property that's being subject to the matter. So if you were, or anyone was outside 200 feet from that, the code does not provide for mail notice. It also provides for posting on the property, which is that sign you're talking about that's not real big. But that needs to be posted when? I'm looking to staff.
I think it's 10 days.
10 days.
10 days, that should've been-
Went up last night.
Went up last night, don't know.
And last night. I don't mean yesterday afternoon. Went up last night after I was home. The other neighbor saw it on her way home from when she got off of work.
So we do, we verify our postings. So the city planners that are working the case will go out and verify the postings are made, the sign postings are made. The actual posting is, is done by the applicant, and I believe the city planner, Beswick, went out and verified this sign posting.
I did, yeah, so I was, I visited the site, as mentioned in the previous presentation. This site is a bit peculiar. It is not on the Crestview Heights road. There's an easement, but there's not a road to the site. So they did have the sign posted on the property here. And I notified our staff, so we went and did extra notices, because the sign was, it was there, but it was barely visible. So we extended the notice boundary, I believe, all the way down to the intersection of the western intersection to the west on Crestview Heights Drive. So this was, normally it's visible by the road, but this site currently doesn't have a road to it, apart from posting it on somebody else's property, which we wouldn't necessarily recommend unless with their approval. That was the alternative done for notification.
Okay, I'm gonna get you over at the mic, so you guys can line up over at the mic, and we'll get you over there.
This won't take, it just sounds like a problem.
Yep, we're gonna, we're not gonna have it on the, we're gonna have it on the, on mic, I gotta do that. So we'll do that. And I, I gotta keep dealing with Mindy's question. So I have no idea, maybe there's gold buried back there, but that, that does seem like a lot, but what you're, what you're seeing, and then if that's good news maybe for you, then if there's gold back there, or oil. But there's always a disparity between what the county assesses the property at, and what would truly necessarily be FMV, fair market value. And that's especially true with ag land. You'll see the ag land that's assessment value has no relation to the 15 or $20,000 an acre it might be worth today. It's, it's not assessed anywhere near that. So that's a county issue. We don't have any, any visibility about. Regarding subsequent access, I'll call it bootstrapping onto this one. I don't think you've got a lot of exposure there, because the property to the north and west is owned by Lynn Flat, and that's a separate owner with their own access to their parcel. And then the remaining remnant, kind of that loop, if you will, gets into floodplain and grade differences. So, and then you cross the creek to get to the other. So I don't think there's, realistically, where did Mindy go and insert? There you go. I don't think realistically that's a big concern, because there's not much left there to develop beyond that. But they'd have to come in and meet a conforming lot and everything else, and that would be a whole new process. Can't look into the crystal ball, but that would be feedback. Anything additional from staff beyond what I've?
No, I think the, the point of the creek is, is really the limiting factor. I can all but guarantee a single-family development, a residential development could not afford to build a bridge across Crow Creek.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want, Bill's here, I don't know if you want him to answer anything about that. But I do believe that there used to be another, I mean, another property next to this that he owned that was sold. So maybe it was all one at one point and got separated.
This was recently sold and was part of that.
That's what I was thinking. So at one point, it probably was a bigger piece of property when it was purchased at that price.
So that, that consideration reflected a different piece of property than just this one?
If it pleases the commission, maybe just a little bit of understanding of what going from A1 to A2 means.
Sure.
Those are both agricultural districts. A1 is agricultural reserve or urban reserve, basically ground that is underground or undeveloped. A2 is large, single-family rural homes, agricultural homesteads. So typically not gonna be a subdivided area with a lot of dense housing. You can't do that in an A2 zoning district. There are already some encumbrances on this land with floodplain and existing power lines that create some-
Minimal building space.
Yeah, minimal building space. Development is hindered by those. So for this lot to be something more than a single-family home would be very difficult.
Yeah. As they say, you can air-condition the parking lot, but does it make sense to do it? And probably not. But yeah, so yes ma'am, you're next.
I'm Charlene Merritt, and we own the, Ed and I own the property adjacent to this suggested rezoned property.
Okay.
And I will take credit for putting a sign up down at our entry, because we saw somebody come in and took something down in on the corner of that lot and went down to look at it and saw that it was about rezoning. And so made a call, got a little information, then just a couple of days ago, we did receive the letter, which I did try to disseminate to the neighbors so that they would be aware. I don't know, as members of this commission, if you've walked the walk with us up there for 50 years to know that Crestview Heights is a unique, private neighborhood with its own set of issues on an ongoing basis in regard to the road. And so we're very protective of the road, mostly because we've had to pay big bucks to make it viable for us to get in and out of there. And so we have a lot that our home is on, which you've shown there. And then we bought the lot below us, which is adjacent to Pender's property. The groupies who live across the street on Lot 1 of the addition have what's being shown there as an easement of the road continuation of Crestview Heights along their, I guess it would be their southerly border. And we have it along our, our border on our lot, their home is on. And it goes a short ways down on the next lot. It does that easement for the road does not show on our warranty deed or any documents that we ever signed. So I guess as far as we're concerned, it would have to be proven to us that that actually wasn't easement on that second lot. But we do have probably about 100 feet that have no easement on it, so there's really not access to that lot at this time. And I, because we have lived there and we have experienced this space for such a long period of time, there's a lot of things that I could add to this conversation. I will try to add a few of them with comments that if you don't, if you'll go along with me here, I will try to read some of this off for you so that you get a feeling for that it's really, I don't know why Mr. Pender didn't call us to see if it was a good idea to buy that ground down there. Okay, this, there are three sets of concerns. One is environmental concerns.
Hey, can you pull that paper off the mic? There we go.
Oh, I'm sorry, environmental concerns. And to avoid another 1990 crisis of flooding, the city of Bettendorf made a commitment to reduce the problems with flooding along the creeks. Therefore mandated retention ponds and dredging resulted in a considerable amount of money being collected each month for groundwater retention from all residents. At the time of the flooding, we had shared the city's concerns since we had friends who had lost their homes. And we personally witnessed the debris from the raging Crow Creek, which is the creek that runs all along there, waters deposited 20 feet up in the trees that are situated on this low-lying property. Currently, the acres of grass, ground cover, bushes and trees which fill the space uphill from the property provide a natural water retention for the rushing waters from the existing Crestview Heights Drive in heavy rains. And that is an issue, because that hard surface that up to our house is fairly flat and then all of a sudden it takes a downward dive. Now, the groups have, uh, have become very aware of this, and before they bought the property, the person that built it took into consideration that they better do something to stop the water flow, because it does rush right down that hard surface and right into his house if there is not a clean drainage area there and also one that works to a point from some guttering up above our driveway. But if you continue to add hard surface all the way down another 200 to 250 feet, you're going to have a real issue. And that is not what the city is talking about as far as water retention, I don't think. The, um, just to give people, because it's hard to see when you're looking at the flat map, what the lay of the land is. But if you think of Belmont Road and the way it goes down, that's what's going on on this part as you just move over to our hill. That road is, that space down there is just really steep. You talk to my husband who's mowed it there, he will say that is not a good plan. And then that, of course, is even deeper down there time you, you get to the next lot. Now, this, with this current consideration of rezoning for development of the Pender property, excuse me, of the Pender property, we're very concerned that future buyers will find themselves in very tenuous situation with the unrestricted surface water from the new hard, hard-surface roading, which leads to the designated floodplain with its easements for the intercept sewer and the tiring overhead electrical lines. So yes, I see that they sort of box that off, because no, I don't know if you're even allowed to build under those. That's not just your normal, ordinary electric wire.
You can't build under the easement.
Yeah. The, um, in the winter, our getting up and down our hill to get up onto Crestview Heights Drive from down on Belmont is a real challenge and requires a lot of ice melt and, and that has, I'm sure, some consequence on the, um, the environment. And you would need a lot of it there to make that passable, because we constantly struggle with it getting into the neighborhood. But I hate to think going down that steep drive and up was going to be to anybody's advantage. They'd have to have a horse and buggy, I guess. The other concerns that we have have to do with the road association, and that was alluded to there. We all pay a lot of money and have, over the years, to build that road up where it's passable, usable, and gives some value to the neighborhood. Whoever buys that lot would have to have a prorated expense right up front to use that. I'm sure if the association agreed, that it was a viable idea. The, um, and I think that that's another whole discussion would have to be made in conjunction with this. I know you say that it has to be done privately, and maybe it does, I don't know. But I guess I would have a hard time thinking that our road association would be all in for that. I know that people that wanted to use our, front of our drive, the first lot in, they were having to come off, they were in Pleasant Ridge, and their access was onto Belmont. They wanted to come in off of Crestview Heights. That was a, a big deal to try to get that organized so that they understood their responsibilities to the association. And people need to be aware that if you don't take care of your road assessments, it becomes a lien on your property. It's not, um, it's not an easy road to hoe. Then the other thing that's, that's more personal are individual concerns. We have been there 50 years. And we bought it at the time, even though there was a lot of difficulties getting up to that little mountain lodge that we moved into at the time. It was so, so absolutely special, because it sits the highest place in Scott County, just about next to Fennel Hill. So you could see 12 miles over, across the river, beautiful sunrises and moonrises, and then the whole downward part is all wildlife. And that's another thing you start developing down there. You certainly are going to be disruptive of what, what has been the natural habitat for animals for many years. And then we have reviewed and the, our recorded warranty deed on our lot that's adjacent to this property. And there is no easement recorded in that warranty deed. Now, the fact that Crestview Heights Drive seems to show up on this, on part of that lot, maybe there is something that supersedes our, our purchase on that second lot. But it stops at the end of Lot 1, and our lot keeps on going before you get to the Pender property. So I don't think that Ed and I are really interested in going out of our way to say, y'all come on. For one thing, it will be disruptive for a lot of reasons, but it also would not be providing any happier situation in our neighborhood because of, of just what goes on up there now. But anyway, I appreciate your, your thinking these things over. And maybe even take a walk out there down that hill, might give you a feeling for why Mr. Pender, who bought the property walking off of his lot that he had in Pleasant Ridge, which is pretty level down there, and you just walk right out. And at one point in time, he had an easement there to get to that back lot, which he abandoned, because the people who bought the house from him just recently didn't want it there. Well, it makes sense to me that that should have been not abandoned, it should have been kept in place, instead of just assuming that they were going to use our roads, for whatever reason. And then, of course, when I look at the shape of that lot, and it has a little hook that goes up over the creek, which I doubt anybody's going to spend a million dollars to put a bridge over that creek, but who knows? There's some good buildable land up and over that somebody may want to. We ran into some situations when well owners wanted to develop that 13 acres that it was owned by Morel, I think, at the time. They, there was a decision that they wanted to, to put an open road that would take it down Crestview Heights and go down around the creek and come out on Silver Spur. Well, that didn't get too far, because there was a strong disagreement about the private roads up there and our privacy and, and our, our little Colorado retreat in the middle of Bettendorf. Is, are there any questions, or have I just gone overboard?
No, I appreciate all your input, it all helps with perspective. It's not easy to hear, but part of my answer, response to you is that a lot of it, we frankly have no control over because of the private road status that you're out there. If this were a public street in a public right of way with public easements, we'd be having a whole different conversation.
Absolutely.
I think for all of you in the group that are, that are part of this development discussion here, what you're probably going to need to do is get some good legal review of that existing easement, which, which, I mean, they gave it to us and said, here's our access agreement. It was recorded in 1985. Morel is actually the grantor of that easement, who was a name you just mentioned as one of the previous owners. So back in 1985, Morel granted some right, and it appears to be this lot area here, to the benefit of that parcel. So what you're going to need to do is get a legal opinion and perspective on exactly what rights were granted, what rights your property are subject to. And then you've got another whole level of discussion without doing your lawyering for you about who pays for what relative to the current agreement you all have between the neighbors for the existing section of the road. And what happens if somebody attaches onto the end of it, but isn't technically part of the agreement that you all have on the, on the western, eastern, western part of it? So those are things that you're going to need to sort out, unfortunately, personally between the parties involved. And it, it's not something the city can address or fix. But it's, the, the issues you've raised are certainly relevant in the discussion. But it's all going to come back to what was recorded. And if it was missed on your abstract or something, then you've got another issue with your title company and things like that. But as I've looked at this and listened to what we've heard so far, that's kind of my initial read on what I'm hearing going on, without being your lawyer, which I'm not.
Yeah, and like you said, our, our job is to decide, does it make sense to have A2 in this area? It's an agricultural area. I mean, it, it really fits and is logical just to go from A1 to A2, which doesn't, you know, necessarily address their concerns about the neighboring easement.
So if that's all, that's great, appreciate the input, and we'll take the next person. Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Burke. I live at 5020 Crestview Heights Drive. I'm the current HOA treasurer for the Crestview Heights Association. Really, a lot of the, the points I was going to make have already been made. Any connection to our road would definitely force an inclusion into our HOA. We do yearly assessments for, for road maintenance and snow and ice removal in the winter. So that would have to be into consideration. And I guess my recommendation, if it'd be so bold, is to provisionally grant the rezoning based on the easement discussion that's going to be a private matter. If that is held up in, in court or litigation, or essentially denied or granted, that would answer the rezoning question. If it's, the easement holds up in court and it's legally reviewed and upheld, then go forward with the rezoning. If not, leave it as is, as a non-conforming law.
Yeah, and, and we don't really have that latitude at this point, because our, our development process asks, asks them to produce verification of access, which they've done. And what we can't do as a city, and our council usually sits next to me, he's not here tonight, but he, he chatted with us about this earlier and said, be very careful, good advice, not to be the lawyers in this, and we, and we won't be. But we, we as a city cannot take on the role of adjudicating that, which I think you understand. And we also can't, for good cause, pause, because it's not relevant to our discussions that we've approved, been provided proof of access. All the things that I've just mentioned and you need to do, like, you know, it seemed equitable that if somebody adds onto the end, they would have some obligation to participate. What does the document say? Does the document, you know, put any obligation for maintenance on the stretch of road he gets to, to get to his easement? It may or may not. What's the right thing to do? And working that throughout, that becomes really unfortunately the burden of your homeowners' association. And in particular, it becomes more sensitive, Charlene, next to you, because you're the, you're the last house in. So, or last house before you, you get there, and it looks like that easement comes off a part of that one lot, so. Yeah, no, appreciate the comment. Yep. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Dale Rufflinger. I live at 5345 Crestview Heights. That's showing on that one map there, way towards your.
Gotcha, yep.
Over the years, I was a president of the association also. I've dealt with this road ever since I've been there. I've been there probably about 18 or 19 years now. As you get down to the Rupp property, which is across from the Edwards, what we were talking about is that the runoff during a hard rain or during, you know, snow melt or whatever, created a huge gully right about above the Rupp property there. I mean, so deep that we were afraid that if any child would get to the edge of that and fall, fall into that, they could die. So all of that area down there, we, we had a road that went up through my property, which we took out all of the curbing and everything else. We took all of that rock and tried to fill that in. And we did somewhat of a job on that. But as that water naturally runs down that way, we do not have a sewer system. It all runs down into the very property that you're talking about, changing. So for us who've lived up there and seen the runoff and what goes down in there, and what happens when that creek floods down in that area? what happens when that creek floods down in that area and why no one has developed that before is something that you guys really need to take a serious look at. Because that should be a wetland. That should be the way it is. So other than the association and having big trucks up there and probably ruining the roads that we just got done with because we were done with all of the construction up there, the thousands and thousands of dollars that each of these people have paid out to try to make that road what it is today. And then besides that, not being able to handle the situation down there at the end where we have that water runoff down into that area? I think that should be a major concern for the city. And that's why I say that this shouldn't go through. But I don't know how many of you have been down there or been down there when it's been a torrential rain or what we've had to deal with back in there. But it's not a good spot for a house. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So from a building standpoint, I'm looking to staff now. How are we involved as a city relative to drainage way, topographical permit when he goes to get a building permit or whoever buys the lot?
They have to comply with our COSESCO ordinance, so they have to obtain a permit for that. That's erosion control. There is a basic grading plan that has to go through, but we do not over regulate single family homes. You would have to disturb more than an acre to have to qualify under our stormwater ordinance in terms of detention. If that acre, if that toll lot is 1.3 acres and you're probably only building on, you know, 15,000 square feet, but somewhere like that, you're not going to hit that threshold.
It looks like a really small buildable pad right there. Yeah.
Can I ask Mr. Rupp a couple of questions about that? Mr. Rupp, can I have you back up at the podium, please? Do you mind? I had a couple of follow-up questions for your comments.
My name's Ruplinger.
Oh, Ruplinger, sorry, Mr. Ruplinger. So you're concerned, what I heard you saying is you're concerned about the water runoff because it's very, and I have actually walked this property previously.
Thank you.
And I know that we don't have a topography map here and I understand it's a very steep slope and it's covered in trees, correct? So right now it kind of has a natural erosion control with the trees and the foliage that's there.
Yeah, you're right.
And so what I hear you saying is to extend the road down and put a house there, it's going to cause water concerns for that house, right? It wouldn't really necessarily change anything for your property, would it?
No, it wouldn't change anything necessarily for our property. It would just extend the situation probably then on both sides of the Rupp property. Currently, we have a kind of a drainage system that's right to the, right to the left of what that map is showing there, right before their property, right down between the property lines is this huge gully and valley down there that had been partially natural, but mainly created by the runoff there. And the runoff created, I'd say a 15-foot, if not deeper, gully in there that just eroded the, the property and the land. We took a lot of rock and, and big trucks and loaded a lot of rock down in there to help slow it down, prevent it. So not only is the Rupp property going to have an issue on that side, they're also going to have an issue on the other side when that road is possibly extended. And who extends the road and what curbing is put in there and what drainages is added to that to make our area safe and even safe for that house that's going to be put in there and still have runoff that runs it back down in behind that property? That's, I would think that would be the biggest concern.
Yeah, I can see how that makes sense. Do you have any topography maps, Taylor?
Not, no, I can't get some.
As we kind of get into the weeds of this, it's still zoned A1. It's still developable property right now. And this, this question of property rights, development rights and road rights.
Road construction and all that.
Those exist whether you rezone or not. A district could come forward and, and want to build a compliant A1 property development on this property. And our answer would be the same. There are issues that probably need to be discussed in a court of law because these are private property development issues between private property owners. And the status of this agreement is not something that we can really weigh in on. It's recorded at the county. We can tell you that. Whether or not you change the zoning to A2, that issue remains the same.
So someone could build something on it right now as A1 and someone could also build something.
Conforming use right now.
Right, and someone could build something down there with it, A2.
Right. And, and so I think the question that's before this commission, while I, while I appreciate the questions of the, of the audience members, because I would have them as well. They are rational questions. They need answers. We can't answer them. I have the same thoughts in my mind that they have. But the zone is what's, is what's within your control and, you know, that's really where, where your day begins and ends. And then, you know, you're, you're a smart commission. You'll, you'll make your decision, but, or make your recommendation. But I think notwithstanding, there's still questions about that road and those private access agreements and, and development rights. Those exist whether we have this case on our agenda tonight or not.
I can see how that makes sense. Thank you, Mark.
I have a question. If, if it's no different if they can build with a, an A1 or an A2, why are we all here?
To clarify that you cannot, an A1, the minimum size of the lot is five acres. This lot is, this parcel is 1.3 acres. So, but if it was, if hypothetically, if there was five acres, no rezoning would be needed.
But his still, still his access and use and enjoyment of his property as an A1 property is still in question because how does he get there? Let's just say he's going to do, he's going to put a vegetable garden on this property. He has the right to do that. It's an A1 property right now. You then would still have the remaining question of how does he access this property? I don't, I can't answer that for you besides the fact we have a recorded agreement at this, at the county courthouse that's been presented to us as staff. The body that's designed to answer those questions is not us.
Yeah, I, I mean, if I were the homeowners association, I'd engage counsel. I'd have a surveyor plat, the recorded easement and go out there and see where those stakes are and where exactly those easement rights exist relative to the existing road. Because they better touch each other because if there's a foot of gap, somebody's got a problem. But I, I think you need to lay on the ground exactly where the, the rights that are recorded are and then figure out based on the language, who's got what rights and obligations relative to the easements. To me, that'd be the beginning point because it, it is recorded. They've met the standard as far as producing a indication of access to us, which we can't lawyer and say, oh, it's invalid or it doesn't touch. But given the relationship, that would be my unprofessional recommendation. Yeah. I lived in a, in a neighborhood with private streets at one time and I sympathize with you because it was a never-ending battle. And the guy that was first on the street never let pay as much as the guys that last on the street. Yeah, I've been to that rodeo and it's no fun. So yeah. Anyone else with regard to this matter? Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Pender and that's my lot.
Oh, all right. Welcome.
Thank you. And I guess I'm just here to kind of reiterate some of the things that have been said as far as, I'm just asking for it. It's inappropriately zoned right now. And I'm just asking for the appropriate zoning. You know, I, I'm not intending on developing the lot. I'm planning on selling the lot. A future owner might, you know, want to do that and I want to protect that easement. I guess obviously there would be some issues to work out with the homeowners association that have really nothing to do with this organization. I will make one comment. In 2007, when the merits put in addition on their house, they had requested that the city let them encroach on the easement. And I have the documents from those meetings. And the city supported the easement as far as not allowing them to build to encroach on the easement. They recognized that there was an easement through there and that there may need to be future access to that.
Okay. Yeah, there's no question, something's out there.
Yeah.
Where is it? What is it? And that, that was, needs to be determined.
And I, I think to me that, that is down the road.
Yeah.
Doesn't really have much to do with what we're here tonight. That's just my opinion.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience? Last call. Okay, back to the commission.
This doesn't make anybody feel any better, but it's unfortunate that these things come to light and all the expense of the road and the drainage and the, I'm so sorry, all of that has happened. But these things generally don't come to light in this situation until exactly this happens, that a rezoning takes place and, and it doesn't help you, but it's not within our, our ability, job description here. We can only do what we can do.
And we also have to do what we have to do based on the information in front of us. So yeah. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 22-041, subject to the staff recommendations. Approve it. Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-041, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, thank you. 22-041 is recommended for approval. And again, I would, we know the owner. I would meet with the owner and get a survey and some opinion relative to the documents and then kind of figure out who stands where with what kind of documentation. Okay. All right. Next case.
Thank you, Chairman. Next case before you is 22-048. This is a rezoning request located in the northwest corner of Hopewell Avenue, Chriswell Street. The applicant in this case is Our Lady of Lord's Church, Our Lady of Lord's Church and St. Gianni Church. He requests to rezone a part, a portion of a new tract of land from A1 to R2. The proposed use is a church and a K through eight school. I will, the next case on the agenda is related and it's a plating of this land. Case 22-049.
I mean, we can't hear him.
Can you? Yeah, there we go. We'll get him a little closer to the mic.
The map before you shows the proposed rezoning. I will note the slightly inaccurate, the rezoning request goes a little farther out. This is just a visualization of the current parcels. The current zoning designation for the area is A1 agricultural urban reserve district. The proposed uses as mentioned are defined as religious assembly and primary education. Both are permitted uses in the R2 district. Currently, a farmstead owned by the Ven Horse is located on northeast of this property. That will remain. This contains farmhouse, outbuildings, and also has active agricultural uses, which will remain. The future land use map designates this area as ULI or urban low intensity. The R2 zoning is consistent with this land use designation. In addition, churches and schools are compatible and desirable uses for the current uses. So we have subdivisions, recently approved subdivisions or contemplated subdivisions north and south of here. And then most future land use designations will most likely have similar uses that are compatible to a church and school as well. Also to note, Hopewell Avenue has curb and gutter and a bike and ped trail on the north side, all extending to Chriswell. So this amenity would be desirable in location for a school. The applicant has submitted a concept of the development. This is preliminary, but the proposal shows a lot, two lots, which will be contemplated in the final plat. Lot 1 is just the subject of the rezoning. Lot 2 will remain A1 and will continue its agricultural use at this time. Lot 1 shows a proposed eight, K through eight school. And then also a church on the intersection of Chriswell and Hopewell. Also are added our soccer field, ball diamond and detention pond, along with a combined parking lot and a separate parking lot for, I think, the preschool. In reviewing this rezoning, as mentioned on the previous cases, staff looks at, informed me with the future land use map, potential externalities, public utilities, and whether this is in the public interest. Staff contends it meets all these considerations and would recommend approval of this request. I can take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything since publication?
No, not on this one.
Questions or comments from the commission?
I think it's great to see another private school going in to our city.
A lot going out in that neighborhood right now. Yep.
It's going to be a huge benefit to the community.
Yep. All right. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, sir.
My name's Paul Ven Horse. I live at 18921 Chriswell. Where's, is there going to be retention pond on this property? I didn't, I didn't see anything. Okay, it's going to be on the west side.
Southwest corner of it. Yep.
Okay. So everything will, from that property is all going to drain to the west?
This is a concept plan. So this, this is rezoning the property.
Okay.
The next step, because this is, everything other than single family developments requires a site development plan review. So the development will require that, which has engineered design plans. It will stormwater couts, et cetera.
That's why I was just curious. I was sitting over here, I couldn't see what, because I live right across the street on, on Chriswell. So that's why I was curious where all this water was going to go. So.
But staff would note there is, the school has shown the proposed church parking lot and there is extra land to the north. This is the forest green subdivision, Hunting and Meadows. So I'm guessing they'll be moving parts based on topography and stormwater drainage, et cetera. And one other note, and I will touch on, I'll touch this on the final plat. There is a stormwater sanitary storm easement going through the property, which will connect to the northern subdivision shown here, but I'll.
They're going to run sewer up? Oh, really?
Is that storm sewer you said or sanitary or both?
It's just sanitary.
Sanitary. Okay.
Will that feed that subdivision there on the northwest corner?
Yes.
So they're not going to bring sewer down Chriswell like they originally were going to plan when they were going to rezone the, when they had the rezoning of that one, the developer was going to bring the sewer down Chriswell to Hopewell and then go west?
This is, yeah, this is what's proposed right now.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
That answered my question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? No? We're going to have to wait a minute. Yep. We lost our quorum. We'll be right with you. All right. We have case 22-048. Can I have a motion on that one, please?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to approve case number two-two dash zero four-eight, subject to staff recommendations.
I would second that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case two-two zero four-eight, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, thanks. Twenty-two zero four-eight is recommended for approval.
And Lisa, if you'd record one abstention.
Oh, sorry. Yep, forgot about that. You wrote me a note, too.
Thank you.
Joe was, Joe was an abstention. All right, next one.
Okay, next case before you is twenty-two dash zero four-nine. This is the same property. Our Lady of, this is a proposal for a final plat. Our Lady of Lord, St. John Viani addition. As touched in the previous case, proposed to be zoned to R-two for a church and a K-through-eight school. Surrounding properties and the final plats. So as mentioned, there's two lots in the proposed subdivision. There'll be no public street infrastructure added. One note would be that they're dedicating seventeen feet of right-of-way on Chriswell. Chriswell is classified as a collector and above. Therefore, we have a hundred-foot standard for that. So they're dedicating the city's half of that hundred feet. The other half would lie, and Chriswell lies in the county. Other notes on the plat that I don't wanna be redundant from the rezoning, but the storm wa, or the sanitary sewer thirty-foot is shown. Uh, bisecting or going across the property. Setbacks for the R-two are twenty-five feet for the front yards and rear yards. The A-one zoning remains on lot two. I think I've touched, it's a pretty straightforward lot. I can, staff recommends approval of the plat. I can take any questions.
Anything, Mark, on this one?
I did step away just for a minute to help with some crowd control. Taylor, did you mention the adjustment of the lot line to the west?
He did. Yep. All right, thanks. I have one, one question. I'm just looking at the plat there. Yeah, so, and maybe I've just answered it myself. I saw a little notation, ten feet, but that's the ten feet is a little bit of the line for the setback. So why would you locate, and maybe it's because of where the pipe comes in, but why would you essentially cut off that ninety feet of western property in the lot instead of running that sewer easement down the west line?
It follows the natural grade of the property.
Okay.
So there's a drainage way through that.
Okay. That was easy. Thanks. Anyone else in the commission? Yeah. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we'll approve case number two-two dash zero four-nine, subject to staff recommendations.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case two-two dash zero four-nine, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Abstentions?
One.
One. See, I got you this time. So I, I'm trainable. Good. All right, thank you. That twenty-two zero four-nine is recommended for approval. Okay, next.
Thank you, Chairman. Next case before you is twenty-two dash zero four-five. This is a final plat for Forest Green. A, this subdivision is located on Forest Grove Drive and Chriswell, on the southwest intersection corner. The applicant is Dick McNamara. This proposed, the proposed use here is forty-six single-family homes, nineteen, and nineteen townhome structures. So you'll have a hundred-and-eighteen new addresses or units. Related cases to this final plat for the rezoning, approved by council, and the preliminary plat for Forest Green, also approved by council. The zoning at this location, as approved by council, is R-three and A-one. The R-three area will hold all the, will be the area for the current development and single-family and townhomes. This rezoning is conditional. Final plat and site development plan must materially match the approved concept plan. The northeast section of this area is shown as neighborhood commercial on the future land use map. This area was, remains A-one, so at a future time, they will rezone that to appropriate zoning designation that has not come forward yet. So it remains A-one. It'll be undeveloped and not part of this plat, or not developed in this plat. Before we use the approved concept plan, the single-family homes are pretty much divided to the west, and then the townhomes are going to the east. And then you have the remaining future commercial that will remain A-one and the northeast. This case has been, like I mentioned, as a rezoning. It was, this concept was shown to the commission and council and at the preliminary plat. From the concept plan to the subsequent preliminary plat, there has been few, if any, changes. In fact, from the preliminary plat to the final plat, there was nearly no changes except for road names. But I'll just touch base on the development quickly. There's a thirty-five-foot setback, rear yard setbacks on all lots adjacent to the southern developments and western developments. This is more than the twenty-five required per code. And there's also a thirty-five-foot front yard setback with a berm along Forest Grove Drive. That right-of-way was dedicated for this plat, as mentioned in the previous case, for that hundred-foot right-of-way. So right-of, right-of-way was dedicated. As far as sidewalks go, five, five-foot sidewalks are shown in the interior. A crosswalk will be aligned. Currently, it's the intersection of Nottingham Lane and then the proposed Connector Street for this subdivision. This would connect to a sidewalk, sidewalk network that extends west to the developments to the west, Stanley Woods and Spencer Howell first. Here is the final plat. As mentioned, it materially matches the preliminary plat and the rezoning concept plan submitted for those cases in stages of approval. The street names were changed. We, per the city's addressing conventions, we broke streets up. So when they turned ninety degrees, they changed street name. And then as far as the names go, just broke up two-word names and kind of condensed the conventions. Second page of the plat with plat notes and curve table. Here's a rendering of the townhome structures. These will require a site development plan per our code. So the single-family homes will require no more approval, but the townhomes will require a site development plan per code. One more note, some streets do have on-street parking near the townhomes, but they will be prohibited during the snow season. Those streets will have, the on-street parking will be prohibited. Given the final plat, material matches the concept plan and the preliminary plat, staff recommends approval of the final plat of Forest Green subdivision, subject to the following conditions. Does not waive any federal, state, local provisions. And no parking is allowed on streets adjacent to townhome units between November fifteenth, March, and March thirty-first to facilitate snow removal operations. I can take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything else to add?
I think we've had a lot of review on this project. It's very iterative. You'll get another swing at it when you have the site development plan coming forward. There's just really no, no change at all. Again, it's conditional and it's materially matching what has been provided prior to this.
Right. Thank you. Questions or comments from the commission regarding the final plat?
Just a question. Mark, is that intended to be a roundabout at that intersection in the future?
Still to be determined, but there will be some type of additional traffic control with the growth on Forest Grove. And probably a roundabout, seeing as, as how we have kind of established a pattern through there.
Thank you.
My question, Pelican Street, how is that gonna line up with the church?
Oh. So you're referring to this street?
Yes.
The, I can go ahead with that.
You can go ahead.
We just wanted to preserve any future connection. If the church project does not go through, if seventy years from now, the church sells and it's redeveloped, we wanted to make sure we could make a connection in there. It would, pretty close to line up with that, that sewer easement right through there, which is fairly close to their west, proposed west entrance.
And also it preserves, even if the church comes through and there's a, a change in the way they wanna use and develop their site, because we only rezoned it. We did not do a site development plan today for the other property. So as planners, we wanna, we wanna protect connectivity, especially north-south connectivity in this part of the town, because we are so limited in our north-south roadways. So that's why we did it. It's kind of future-looking. But to your point, may not ever get used, but it would be good to have it if we do need it.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. Come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of case number twenty-two dash zero four-five, subject to staff recommendations.
I would second.
All right. Thank you. We, sorry, a motion and a second to approve case twenty-two dash zero four-five, Forest Green final plat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Twenty-two zero four-five is recommended for approval. Okay.
Mr. Greg. The case we're looking at now is for Forest Grove Crossing Sixth Edition. It will be the last of the subdivisions that will be occurring within this locale. Originally, this was rezoned urban medium intensity throughout the entirety of the subdivision in two thousand and eighteen. The land use was split between urban low intensity and urban, urban, yeah, low intensity and urban medium intensity, but the view at the time was to have more of a mixed use. And there was a breakdown in the interior of what would go in what areas. This area right here, you can see it somewhat, a little bit outlined in orange, is what was the part of the original concept of the entirety, which was going to have two commercial areas down here. And then the remainder would be a combination of townhouses and single-family units. What the proposal is presently has changed somewhat, but the idea was to combine into a larger lot, this one being lot thirty-four, the commercial uses. There'd be an outlaw over here for stormwater detention. And then single-family housing within these lots here, lots one through nine and twenty-two through thirty-three are all going to be single-family. These lots here will contain, lots ten through twenty-one will contain three, four-unit townhouses on this side. Cassius Path is sort of that designated point of separation between this being the more townhouse-oriented and this being all single-family, with the exception of lot thirty-four. Staff in reviewing the proposal, we did talk with the developer subsequent and did reach an agreement that this does conform to the standards that were intended for the UMI, urban medium intensity type of zoning. And we would also add in approving this that any sanitary sewer connections be extended as needed to the east parcel. Just do east so that there'll be a sewer service connection. Staff in reviewing this proposal makes recommendation for approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Mark, anything to add?
Just that we did work with the developer in this case, and as we saw the pattern of development that's occurring elsewhere in this larger subdivision, that this matches that pattern. That's the nice thing about the design character area, UMI, kind of that special zoning district that gives us some flexibility to work with developers and P and Z and council to, you know, kind of manage this project as it goes through. So now you get the, the build-out that is proposed there, which, you know, staff is quite happy with because it does match the pattern of development you've seen, retains that single-family frontage, but also keeps the townhome style kind of adjacent or north to where it's already been existing. So just kind of a logical way to divide the property up.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments regarding this matter from the commission? I've got one. So on lot thirty-four, the commercial, what kind of extra, since we're adjoining single-family use, what kind of extra buffering will there be on the north side of that lot?
We might look at the landscape ordinance and relative to what use would go in there. I mean, sort of looking at that use and then looking at the zoning class that it normally go with is how we, we were thinking about this when we were writing up the zoning ordinance in that, you know, matchup, to look at the zoning or the type of use going in. What class would that go into under the Euclidean zoning and then saying, treating this essentially as a single-family and looking at what kind of a single-family that might be, R-two or R-one, given the lot size, and using that as the basis then for deciding how much separation there should be as a buffer yard.
Okay.
And I think in, in general, you're gonna see a larger amount of buffering between a single-family and a commercial development. We understand that. That's one of the reasons we wanted to see this lot combined instead of having two or three little lots.
Yeah.
Cause you got, you got so much buffering, then you have almost no developable lot to come together as one lot. And we do have a number of residents out here and it, they do need some services as far as commercial services, you know, the nearest drive to Hy-Vee or TBK, which really aren't designed, especially TBK really isn't designed to serve this type of customer. They're more for the traveling customer. So, you know, we thought that was an improvement, especially knowing that more buffering would be required. And I can't quote chapter and verse for you for the exact distance per use, but it's increased, obviously.
Yeah, DCA, I think it is. Yeah.
So under the development character area, you're saying this lot thirty-four can be, what, what a type of, what type of buildings exactly, or what type of?
There's, there's, within the DCA definitions, there are a list of uses under UMI, just like there is under Euclidean zoning, and they would have to fall into one of those categories under that UMI designation. There'd be a list of things they could actually put in there. So they have to meet one of those uses or, you know, fit one of those uses.
Okay. So it's pretty specific as to what can be built there or not?
It's gonna be a, a, probably a neighborhood commercial style use, community commercial style use, low-intensity commercials, what's gonna go there.
Low-intensity commercial. Okay, that's what I was expecting.
Because it's a design character area, different than our standard zoning that is kind of blocky. We do get a little bit of give and take. We have not explored that yet specifically with the developer, but that will come to you in the future because it would require a site development plan.
Yeah, there's some similar over in my neighborhood, and people seem to really be enjoying it. Little coffee shop or bakery, things like that.
Yep, yep. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Others from the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. Back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number two-two dash zero four-six, subject to any staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case two-two dash zero four-six. Final plat, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Thank you. Case twenty-two zero four-six is recommended for approval. Greg?
Our next case is a rezoning of essentially A-two to C-two in this area is just due north of Middle Road. It's east of Middle Drive. And as you can see here, Devil's Glen Road, this parcel's somewhat isolated. There were two parcels that were somewhat left over that were A-two in this area. During the nineteen nineties, many people rezoned these areas here, all these residential parcels to C-two, thinking that it would attract development to the area. These two parcels, there was not a rezoning that proceeded, and tonight we're going to address this one right here. A petitioner has contacted us about a temp- A petitioner has contacted us about attempting to set up a laundromat at this locale. In order to do so, parcel would have to be rezoned. And right now, the whole area's land use, future land use map indicates this is all community commercial. So that would facilitate the rezoning to a C2 status. And this is the outline of the building. What would occur is essentially this structure being built, but there would also be other factors that are left over from Duncan and then Taco Bell, such as an access from Middle Drive coming up here and going over this direction. And then the removal of the right in, right out block here and creating full access to both of these lots as we just have one access for two lots. Trying to make sure we get good circulation, but at the same time, we're not providing a unique access for each lot, therefore causing some traffic pattern issues to emerge. This site was governed by what had preceded initially when Duncan went in with this site plan. And there was a connection between these two lots. And also, this impediment was put in place for Duncan's purposes, but the understanding again was to create that circulation and to create one opening here off of Middle Road. Some of the other features that went in with this too, and that will be extended with this development is the sanitary sewer being located through the bottom portion of this lot here. We'll go back to the concept and placing that so that there will be a manhole that will be able to extend service further up the way to meet the needs of future commercial uses. And then, as I mentioned before, the full access off of Middle Road and then the extension of the easement to allow traversing between the lots back to Middle Drive. This is in essence, what you'll be seeing here with this portion being removed. Essentially, what this site is, is not going to have a drive-through, but a drop-off area for laundry. So this is excluding this portion here. And here is essentially what you're going to see at this building with the brick type treatment and the stone around the entry and then at the ends. So in reviewing this, staff feels that this is a proper use. It does meet the rezoning standards. Again, listed out here are listed in 111513B. And then it clearly blends in with the type of uses that are transpiring at this time in the area. I would ask, are there any questions? Staff recommends approval of this request with the conditions in the report.
Thank you Greg. Mark, anything since publication from your perspective? Nope, okay. Questions and comments regarding this case from the commission? It's getting cozy over there.
What did you say Taylor for the drive-in? It's going to be shared with Dunkin' Donuts, it looks like?
The drive, the drive is part of what was, this was already,
It is Greg, sorry.
Right here, the right in, right out island was, is conditioned to be removed only when the full access was granted. So the idea is we talked over as staff, that this island, which is currently here, would be removed. This would allow then left in, I mean, or basically someone coming up here and making a turn into this establishment. They wouldn't have to come down this one direction and go right in and then exit right out. It's a full access now, but it's one access, that's the difference. It's not trying to create more, it's just one access now. And it will have a greater volume of traffic going in. So that's why to remove the impediment is again, going to create that circulation pattern back up through the northern portion and then back out to Middle Drive potentially.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense, actually.
That was actually specified in the resolution for Duncan.
I remember that discussion.
We, one, obviously, as Greg said, we only wanted one access for the two combined. But then we also could not physically fit a full access or even half of it. It would have had to been built, shared on the property line. So that's why we let the right in, right out go, knowing that it would eventually come.
Full circle to this. Good planning, guys.
And no need for those yellow lane divider deals, which I,
Not quite the amount of traffic here.
But I'm still reserving final judgment for snow time, but I do like,
There'll be a few that'll need to be replaced.
Yeah, they are very effective to make people do the right thing though. I have, the turning in the wrong ways are not doing that so much anymore, so thank you for that. Yep, anyone else with the commission regarding this matter? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? The what?
Do we don't have to have a dumpster on that property?
I don't know, I didn't see the dumpster, I didn't ask my dumpster question. That's usually my question. Where's the, oh, it's in the back.
Is it?
Yeah. Trash, yep.
I assume we have all that parking.
Not a lot of trash out of a laundromat, yep.
Lint, tons of lint.
Lint. Yeah. All right, I'll take a motion then if nobody from the audience.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for case, approval of case number 22-050, subject to staff recommendations. I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 22-050, Middle Road rezoning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay. Thank you, 22-050 is recommended for approval. Next one, Greg?
Mr. Chairman, the same proposal or proposer of laundromats for a community has also selected 1801 Kimberly Road as a site development area for a new laundromat. Essentially, we're looking at this parcel here, it's all zone C2. It's pretty much a portion of the same region as Duck Creek Mall is. And laundry services are permitted use in that area. Again, a community commercial between I-74 and then Kimberly Road here. So it's, you know, fitting of that type of a higher volume use where traffic is nearby. Murphy's First Edition Lot Number One is essentially the locale for this proposal. And there is a large access easement that runs through here 45 feet in width. What had originally been proposed about eight years ago was a car wash for this locale. And the access easement, this area is the design was set up, this paving is still here. So in terms of what it is, that is not going to be changed. That is what it is and the proposal, as you see tonight, will not interfere or change this access. And this had been discussed before at the prior meeting when this was a car wash and nothing was done to change that, there was no request made. But given that, there will be no impediment of this area right through here. You do have parking that will go in and it will reflect that essentially this is free and clear for the access from Kimberly Road to the Duck Creek Mall area. You also have circulation here stacking for approximately six vehicles coming in and being able to drop off their laundry. And the building will be the same size, about 2176 square feet. On this, I did ask, and we will put on the dumpster location. I believe that it may be here, but that will be again, a condition of this going forward to city council that there be a dumpster located on the site plan. The utility plan shows that there's a drainage way type easement going through here. Stormwater was not needed because this whole site is pretty much of an impervious surface. It's grandfathered in and essentially it's meeting our requirements. The design this time will have that drive-through as you see here on that building. And this is looking at the building toward the north and there will be a drop-off locale for people presenting their laundry to the establishment. Staff interviewing this proposal feels that it meets all the conditions that we saw in our review process. And we recommend approval, I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you Greg. Mark, anything else to add since publication? Nope, okay, questions or comments from the commission on this one? So this is basically a mirror of the last one but for the drive-through.
Identical, pretty much, except for that drive-through element.
And will this business model, do you know, does it have washing machines and dryers in there? Is this drop-off and pick up your laundry later?
Engineers, they will be able to make that, give you an idea of, we got building plans that look pretty elementary. I mean, there wasn't much detail to show all the layout, but you could ask them.
Do we have somebody there? Yeah, I'm just curious, I mean, just with the lack of windows and things and that, I was wondering. And then with the drive-through, I thought, oh, you drop off your laundry and pick it up later. Okay, yeah, I don't know.
A wash and fold kind of setup, it sounds like.
Yeah, okay, just curious, so, all right. Anyone else from the commission?
Kind of building that supports lots of apartments being built around it.
They're going to clean up with this one.
My family not having their laundry, that's interesting. Drop it off and pick it up.
Well, and there was a note in here that they are going to fix some of the pavement. I know that is a issue, that parking lot is in terrible shape over there. Yeah, it's like a pothole heaven, so. All right, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jack Lauda, I'm with Emory Construction and I represent the owner for these laundry facilities. You had asked about the interior of the structure. There's going to be approximately 17 washing machines and an additional 20 dryers, depending on how they all order out and stack up. There will be, the drop-off facility is meant for those that do not choose to come in and do their laundry. That will be dropped off. There will be an attendant that would manage that facility and take care of that drop-off laundry.
Okay, great, yeah.
I just wanted to answer that question because it sounded like you had some curious thoughts on that.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
If you had any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Just wanted, talked about a brick print-like material, what actually is that brick-like material?
That's actually real masonry, so it will be brick and stone.
Okay.
Looks like split face block, right? Split, split face block is what it looks like?
That is correct, yeah. So it'll be, actually it'll be brick and stone specifically, but the, the, the split face block material will have a color to it. So it will not be a plain masonry unit.
Okay, thank you.
And are both of the facilities, both locations, like wash and fold?
They will be identical in, in operations. And I apologize, Greg had requested a showing the dumpster location for that East Kimberly Road. And there's actually already a dumpster pad on that location. And we just failed to, I failed to get that information to the engineer prior to this meeting. So we will follow up with that.
Jack, is it about where he's got the cursor right now, is that where it is?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
No problem.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 22-051, subject to staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve case 22-051, site development plan on Kimberly Road. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, case 22-051 is recommended for approval. It will take us to 22-034, I think.
The next case before you is 22-034. This is a final plat for Devil's Bluff. So this is, we have two cases and at 1200 Devil's Glen Road tonight, this is a final plat. As shown on the map, the property is located north of Duck Creek, west of Devil's Glen Road. Related cases are the rezoning of this property, 22-007 from R1, I should say, to R4. This has been approved by city council. And then the additional site development plan that will be presented after this case. Proposed use at this site is 12 townhomes and three apartment buildings encompassing 114 units. So a total of 126 units. Zoning is, has been approved conditionally as, as R4. The concept plan must materially match any site plans or final plats approved by this body and then council. Zoom in here a little bit. The site presently, the proposed final plat shows one lot. I'll walk through different aspects of it. The right-of-way at this location, a turn lane was incorporated into the site development plan. This was recommended by a traffic impact study conducted by a third party. The alignment of that, of the right-of-way here had been done prior years. So it required dedication of right-of-way. So that is done through this final plat. All prior easements that had been recorded on the property, so there's many easements. We have sewer, city sewer, sanitary sewer and storm sewer. We have the bike path access easement. This was done with an agreement by the current owner and the city back in 1999. That is shown on this and the document with those conditions that we believe we've covered in previous cases relative to prohibiting development in that easement. So below the bluff at this location, that is preserved and noted in the plat notes. One other note, the city currently has a, for lack of a better term, a key shaped property on the site that is vacant and was not being used. That had, was approved to be conveyed to the owner of lot one, be it the current property owner or the developer applying currently for site development plan. An easement was, a sanitary sewer easement was recorded in that area to preserve access to our city sewer. But portions of that property are now developable, the box portion of the city parcel. Other easements overlapping through the bike path easement, sewer easement. We've got 50, we've got many different easements that have been recorded from the 70s through the 80s and today. Those are, those will preserve the bike path easement that comes up to, up, up the hill to the sidewalk area of Devil's Glen Road. And then, we also have floodplain in the site, so that also has, concombers any other small holes in the easements that are overlapping. Sidewalks currently exist on both sides of Devil's Glen Road. The dedication of this right-of-way and the construction of the proposed turn lane on Devil's Glen Road will require the realignment of that sidewalk just for the extension of the turn lane. Believe that is all that is being proposed here. This is materially matches all the easements shown on previous concepts and the proposed site plan on the next case tonight. Staff would contend this materially matches all those plans previously shown and about to be shown. Staff recommends approval of this final plat. I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you Taylor. Mark, anything since publication on this one?
Taylor hit, hit all the salient points, I will just emphasize a couple of things. One is the key shaped property was vacated. It is now assigned to the owner of lot one. That was done by city council last night unanimously. The, the property no longer serves a purpose to the city. It, it used to be a lift station access point, there is no longer lift station there. We have a different sewer alignment. We are talking with the final plat about the legal subdivision of land, that's what a final plat is. And in this plat, all of our recorded easements are noted and preserved. So all the things that have created the access to the bike path, all the things that created the access from the sidewalk down to the bike path, those all stay the same. Those are not developable. And then, other issues that might come up or questions that might come up, might be more related to the site development plan, which we're just about to talk about after this case. But again, from a legal subdivision, But again, from a legal subdivision of land standpoint, what you have here is, is really one lot with all of our easements shown on it and retained, probably more cleanly than they've ever been done up to now in history. And also that vacation of that one key-shaped piece of property.
And I will note the, the previous, this, this land had not been platted. There was a plat from nineteen eleven, the Frank Drewls addition, but that, the, I contacted the auditor's office and it, and so it's vaca, it's basically a vacated plat. So that was the last time that went over Duck Creek, and it is shown, the previous lots are shown on this plat. And that's, so that, that's one thing to add to that.
All right, thank you. Questions and comments from the commission regarding the final plat?
Just a comment, maybe a question. This solves lots of problems, lots of issues about this site. It's been problematic, but the traffic study didn't recommend a turning lane coming from the south, right? That's not perceived to be an issue?
Correct, it did not. You've got good sightlines coming through there, plenty of time to maneuver around a potential left turner.
Thank you.
In the audience, please. Yes, sir.
Hi, Patrick Lean. I live at fourteen ninety-seven Berryfield, which is almost due west of this properly, property across the, across the creek and the trail.
Okay.
To that last point about the turn lane. So anybody that's tried to get from Central going west-east on the Devil's Glen will understand that that stop sign, it's kind of treacherous. Now, if you add two hundred cars in, moving out of a property a block away, there's gonna be a turning problem. To wave, hand-wave that and pretend it doesn't exist, I think is parochial. And that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you. Brendan, any particular?
No, but again, that's site development plan, so I think we need to stick to the plat when we get to the development plan, but the traffic study was done by a professional transportation engineer, reviewed by our staff. We're in concurrence with it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I was told there'd be free beer here and pizza.
You gotta, you gotta be here a couple more hours.
I think I'll pass.
And then Mark's buy-in, yeah.
Well, my name's Rob Pearson. I live on thirty-four oh five Oakery Lane, which is a little bit further up Devil's Glen. This is our eighteenth year living there, and I've never been to a city council meeting or a commission meeting like this. Never had the need to, and the reason I'm here today is not because it's on a bucket list or anything. It's, it's, I have quite a concern over this traffic pattern. There's really two distinct traffic patterns on Devil's Glen from St. Middle Road to State Street. And once the southbound, and the issue here is the southbound traffic, but the, the person that just spoke about turning out of Central, that, that is gonna be a tough turn. But once that southbound traffic clears Halcyon, and we're just a little cul-de-sac just past Halcyon, and once they get past Deer Brook, it's, it's a speedway, and, and when we moved in there eighteen years ago, it was a speedway. And when we move out, it's gonna be a speedway. The only difference between now and when we moved in is the great number of distracted drivers that are on that road. And I will say this, and I don't know if the traffic study looked at that, but once the traffic, the southbound traffic that clears our street and starts heading straight down towards this development, the vast majority of those cars are turning right. They're gonna turn right on Central, or they're gonna turn right on State. And the problem that I see, and, and is as they come over that, and this development is right smack in the middle of the fastest part of Devil's Glen Road. And as they come over that hill, that's when they start migrating over to the right lane. And I would argue that putting in a turn lane there would probably cause just as many accidents as if there wasn't one, because those people are looking to get over in advance of turning onto Central or to State. And you can, next time you drive down there, you'll see they just start migrating over there, and they're going at great speed. And if somebody turns into this turn lane, oh, great, I can now transition over into the right lane in advance of my, in, in advance of my turn on Central or State. And the people coming out of there, like you say, if there is gonna be two hundred cars there, you, it's a stone's throw from that entrance out of that development to the top of the hill, coming back up Devil's Glen Road. Those people are literally gonna have three seconds to, to see if they can turn on there. And if there is a turn lane there, they're probably not gonna be able to see that the car, if there's a car coming down, or B, that they're making a lane change. And so as the car goes over to the right, great, I can now come over into the right lane. And meanwhile, the person pulling out of there says, great, this guy's turning in, I'm gonna come out, and there's gonna be a destruction zone there. It, 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 it's not gonna be, your typical accident on Devil's Glen now, Devil's Glen Road now is, you know, the person running into the bumper and the gal turning into Wallace's. These are gonna be high-speed crashes. I mean, these are going to be broadsides, and people are gonna get hurt. And this, it's just crazy to me that, that this particular spot in that hollow, which is maybe fifteen hundred feet from, from one end to the other. I don't see it. I don't know how there's not gonna be all kinds of, of damage there, and, and, and and I don't think a turn lane is the answer. I mean, you'd probably be safer if there wasn't one, in my opinion, because those, that would deter the people, the southbound traffic that are eventually trying to get over, at least stop them from doing it there, and push it on down towards Central. But at that rate of speed, and with the amount of commercial vehicles on there, people are really, really gonna get hurt. And, and I, and I'd say if the thirst for development, the city is at a point where they'll accept that or tolerate that, then that, that's a problem, because I haven't had any issues in eighteen years of living here. And it seems as the city goes down this path of development post-COVID, that there seems to be more and more distance between the, the urge to develop and the well-being and safety of the, the people that live in this community. And it's, to me, it's insane to put this type of project with that many cars and that many kids and, and expect a turn lane or to be able to engineer out of that. It's, it's crazy. It's, it's absolutely insane, in, to my opinion, and that's all I got.
Thank you, Rob, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Rick Keebler. I live at thirteen oh four Devil's Glen Road. My father once owned this piece of property with Jim Estes. I understand that it was eventually gonna be developed, and I don't have a problem with that, but I didn't see them envisioning that it would be over exceeded by what they're wanting to develop. And, and that's what my concern is, that it was, it's gonna be overdeveloped, and there's too many occupants there, and that it was not intended for that. And that this was never the thought of envisioning this. I live up on top where I could see this, and I, I have feeling that this is detrimental to that environment right there. I think it's overdevelopment. I think the city shouldn't have sold the land to them. That that was wrong, just so they can develop bigger. I think it should be downsized, and that we, so it, it isn't a hazard for everybody. It, it, the whole project should be downsized. I don't have a problem with the condos or the twelve townhouses, but another hundred and fifteen residents for apartments, that I have an issue with. And I would like to see and recommend that you reassess how much land is actual, land-wise, be able to develop, because I don't think there's that much there that qualifies to be what they're projecting. And, and I wish you'd reassess that. I mean, I know, and my father was down this alley a long time ago with you guys, and before probably any of you were here. And I remember cleaning out the old farmhouse there when it was, before it burnt down. But I'm suggesting that we reassess how much is there, and because I, I, I'm not seeing, it's just gonna destroy the whole area. And I don't wanna, I, I understand it needs to be developed, but I think you're overdoing it, as far as that goes. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. And we'll kind of address that a little more in the next phase. Yep, okay, thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Julie Pearson. Rob and I live up Devil's Glen from the development. And I just, I wanted to add a couple of things about the traffic concerns. I walk down the sidewalk to the bike path quite frequently with my dog. And I just wanted to add that a lot of people do use that sidewalk. People in a variety of physical conditions use the sidewalk. And so that's something that might be a little concerning as they're trying to cross with all of the turning and exiting going on from the proposed development to get, maybe to get on up the hill to, to where they live. But also, there's the entrance to Duck Creek Park, right across the street, which, you know, lots of cars come out of that, too. So you have that Duck Creek Park exit, and then the proposed development, the sidewalk, the bike path coming up to the road. It's just, there's a lot of different pathways converging there. And like Rob said, you know, a lot of the vehicles coming along could be eighteen-wheelers, you know, or big trucks, and they're, they come zooming down. And, you know, even from my point of view, even coming from the south, I know you said there's no need for a turn lane because the sightlines are good, but I don't know if I agree with that, because it seems like when you come up over that hill, coming from the south even, you know, you have to be paying attention, especially if all these different things are happening down at the bottom of the hill. And I think there's, there is a great potential for serious accidents, like we were saying earlier. That's one issue. I also wanted to agree with the gentleman who just spoke that I think it's really unfortunate that the property was rezoned. It doesn't match the surrounding properties in terms of the zoning, and it just seems like that density of population is out of place in that part of Bettendorf. One reason, one of my concerns regarding the population density has to do with Duck Creek Park and the trail and, and the bordering green spaces, where lots of migrating birds and all different types of wildlife live. And I'm just concerned about the impact the construction will have on them. And, you know, habitat is inevitably probably gonna be destroyed. I'm concerned about the overs, oversight. I know Mr. Beswick mentioned that there will be monitoring of the construction to make sure everything is done properly, but, you know, for example, during the spring, will there be construction going on that could affect the nesting of the birds that are protected? So these are just some concerns I have. I'm also wondering how long the correct, the construction will last. Is this gonna take a year to build, or? I'm just wondering, you know, the duration of it and the timing of it, you know, what time of year and so forth. Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate the comments. Anyone else in the audience? Last call, back to the commission. Where are the questions that David submitted? Do we hit?
No, I mean that she was asking. You want to have the developer answer her questions?
Each one of these as we go along?
We did the traffic on the disment, her concern, like, when are they building and stuff?
Yeah, but I think that would be more appropriate at the site plan.
Site plan, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case number twenty-two dash zero-three-four, subject to staff recommendations.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case twenty-two dash zero-three-four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Okay, twenty-two zero-three-four is recommended for approval. And at this point, that's the final plat, so it seems like a small difference, but what we're really dealing with is the specific matters relative to the plating, which were properly addressed and presented for review. All right, next case related to this one.
Thank you, Chairman. The next case is before you, twenty-two dash zero-two-nine. So this is the site development plan for the same property, twelve-hundred Devil's Glen Road. As mentioned, I think we are all familiar with the site now. West Devil Glen, west of Devil's Glen Road and north of the creek. And the proposal is for one hundred and twenty-six units, twelve townhomes and fourteen.
Hey, can that guy talk of him something? I cannot hear him back here.
One hundred and fourteen apartments.
That better?
Thank you.
The future land use for this parcel was, is urban median intensity. There's a lot of R-one through R-five zoning. This parcel was subsequent, this tract of land was subsequently rezoned to R-four. This rezoning is conditional that the final plat and site development plan material matched the approved concept plan. For you is the approved concept plan that was submitted with the rezoning. Showed three apartment buildings with the one hundred and fourteen units and the twelve townhomes. In addition, it showed a turn lane on Devil's Glen Road. This was the results of a traffic impact study conducted by a third party. Also included on this concept plan are floodplain delineations for the site. The one percent or hundred-year floodplain is shown. The buildings are located outside of that. This is shown in blue. And then the purple is showing the preliminary floodplain proposed by FEMA. These have become effective in May of twenty-twenty-three. They have a slight base elevation difference. Also, there is a bike path access easement, as was touched on in the final plat for this. So area south and west of roughly that line are to remain and be preserved. As mentioned, a traffic impact, impact study was conducted. This is available online. This is just the cover of it, and that recommended for the And that recommended for the construction of a turn, a southbound turn lane into the development on Devil's Glen. So before you, the submitted site plan. There are, there have been some small changes, not to the buildings, but to the area. I'll go through each individually. The concept plan had shown showed parking in the area of the site plan. The applicant has preserved green space and included a dog park, fenced in dog park in this area. This is just north of the stormwater quality bio swell area located here. In addition. These, the 114 unit, there's three buildings that contain 114 units. These buildings have garage units as well available for optional, optionally available to the tenants. Some parking has been put as outside behind these garage doors. So effectively they'd act like a driveway parking spot for these units. They'd be tied to whoever has those garage units. So those are shown here and along here. Building, the eastern building has a slightly different layout on the first floor of the other buildings. It has less garage spaces due to an office space and a workout facility in that building.
Can you circle the entrance to this?
The townhomes are located on east on Devil's Glen Road or the eastern portion of the property and north of the entrance. The turn lane is delineated in dark gray here. And then you have a left and right egress from the property located here. And then a ingress located, just one ingress lane located there.
What is ingress?
Uh entryway. The. There's a couple of notes that I want to mention that were not touched on in the staff report. Based on building separation that will need to be amended. Our zoning code requires building separation for townhomes in an R4 district to be 15 feet. The development plan or submitted plan shows 13 feet, so. It's a little blurry, but it's right there. So we'll need to have spread those out. Staff believes there's room to move it to the south. There's between five or more feet located down here. In addition, their building separations required for apartment buildings has been and still is 30 feet. The western and central building are 29.4 feet separated right now. So there there's about three feet to the north that this building could move. The other building has presently showing 21 feet. So there will be need to be amendments to that to meet that portion of the code. The frontages of the townhomes, the proposal is to have. And I'll share this in subsequent slides with the renderings, but it'll be front doors. The applicant has developed similar townhomes on Devil's Glen just south of 53rd. So these have front doors and a stoop, a little over and porch. And then sidewalks going out to the east that connect to the city sidewalk or network. The rear of these townhomes has a two car garage contained within the townhome unit, so it's covered garage. That meets the parking for those structures. The arterials and collectors in the city, any developments along those. Multi-family commercial require a or I should say multi-family developments in the city. Are required to have a 50 foot setback on on arterials or collectors. 35 is allowed as was shown in the previous case with Forest Green. If a included berm is acceptable to the planning commission and city council is included. We just discussed the traffic issues or the traffic sightline issues at this area. This, the applicant has included trees along the frontage here outside of any easements. There is a a number of easements along the frontage there. And they also have the turn lanes, so staff is. Staff would contend that a berm would make any type of sightline issues less safe. It'd be increased sightline issues and make this a less safe environment. It also is incompatible with any type of front yard sidewalk that which you have similar. Situated up here at on Devil's Glen 53rd. So that berm would need to be. Or what the berm is, how it's designed needs to be have like not increase or decrease the safety there. Let's go to the next slide. This is the same site plan with the green, the green space colored. As you can see, the areas shown to the south and the west and the floodplain are preserved. The grass path that is not part of the bike path, it's a dirt path that was put in at some point and has birdhouses in it. That will be preserved. We have green space to the north, the dog park, as I mentioned, and then frontage, green space along the frontage of Devil's Glen Road. In addition, there's traffic islands in the parking lot. With some more trees. This is above and beyond what the landscape, our landscape ordinance or handbook, which is in our ordinance requires due to the site having. Trees on 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 site. The current parking allotment shows a total of 214 spaces. This is based off our off-street parking schedule and our zoning ordinance. Different size of units of multi-family require a number of different ratio of spaces. So the requirement for this development is calculated by staff is 222. So this site will need eight more spots. Staff believes and has talked with the applicant that there is room in the number of areas to. Add eight spots either individually or collectively. So we have talked to that, that will be need another amendment needed to this site plan. Regarding stormwater, the development. Has included stormwater quality additions. There'll be two stormwater outlets going to Duck Creek. Stormwater is not required to be detained on this site due to its adjacency to Duck Creek. And this is for any properties along the Duck Creek waterway and our Mississippi River drainage area. This will go underneath the bike path, so there won't be any pooling. It'll go through the underneath the bike path and then out into the creek. And that is the stormwater. And then the floodplain on the site, the first floor elevations or the lower floor elevations of this, these are four floor. These have a walkout on the west side and three floors on the east side is two feet, which is required by our city code above the base flood elevation. So it meets that as shown on here. They're showing at 594 feet and the floodplain 592. I can go through the floor plans as mentioned before. This is the first and. The basement and the first floor plans. These would be the walkout, they're not actually walkouts, but they are, they have a railing around them, so you wouldn't be able to walk out. But they're on basement level and then you walk up and you have your first floor with your garage stalls. And that's that's the case for two of the buildings and the easternmost building would have. I believe three garage stalls replaced with an office and a workout facility. The second floor and third floor will be a variety of studio, one bedroom. And two, two to three bedroom apartments. And there's a layout of those. This is a apartment building rendering. So this is the garages, as mentioned, facing as your perspective is from the parking lot. And then your perspective from the, if you're on the hill, I guess. These were the the walkouts as mentioned, for lack of a better term. The basement level apartments and then the side views. The townhomes, here's a rendering of those, just one building, so or one, six attached townhomes. The front, so facing the perspective from Devil's Glen is noted up here. We have a side views. And then the rear, which would face the parking lot, you have your garage doors and rear entrance. So this meets, this materially matches the concept plan with the noted amendments needed by staff. So we had some distances noted, the parking requirements noted. The berm requirement is. Staff is recommending with the safety be really considered for that to be limited. And I believe with the comments from the audience too, that it's really increasing a berm there would not. Increase safety by any means. But with with those amendments added to staff's recommendation. Staff would recommend that approval of this development plan as it materially matches the rezoning concept plan, which approved was approved by this commission. Recommended for approval and approved by council and the final plat, which was covered in the last case. I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor, appreciate it. Mark, any other further comments?
Just to clarify on a few points that were made there. You know, we would, we would posit that this this action today on the site development plan include conditions added by this body. Relative to a berm being zero berm. Just so you know, note five of the bulk standards table for R4. Says that the required front yard, rear yard setback to any collector, minor arterial or principal arterial street as defined in the Bettendorf transportation plan. Shall be 50 feet or 35 feet when a berm acceptable to the planning and zoning commission and city council. Which that gives you the latitude in defining that berm or not. For obvious reasons, we don't want to put a turn lane in and then put a berm in front of it. So we recommend there be no berm, just to clarify that, put the, put a pin in that.
Well, how would you have a front door with a berm in it?
Right, and and you're in that's my second point is is your previously conditional rezoning that came through this body and through city council, city council. Required front doors, so you're asking the petitioner to put front doors and sidewalks and patios. To have that fenestration of a front door looked facing Devil's Glen Road. Then to cover that up with a berm also seems silly. So just kind of double emphasize that, if you will. And then we do, we do see, you know, you have a, you have a 10 acre spot here, you have five acres of which is developable roughly round numbers. It would be relatively easy for the developer and engineer to get together and find eight parking spaces, you know, and and. The minimal distance increases they need for these buildings. It's well findable within this area and still meets the conditional rezoning barriers that you put up originally.
Okay, thank you. Questions and comments from the commission, please?
I have a couple of questions. Thank you for the, like, the explanation is very, very helpful. Couple of comments about fences. I recall the owner of the property to the north had talked to us previously about the fence. And I saw that, is that going to be a like a six foot fence from the front all the way to the back to keep any children from crossing over that? Or do we know that?
That can be discussed with the applicant and I don't know if we've discussed the height of the fence or the type.
I did, I just recall that that's something we had discussed previously.
Yep, you're correct in recalling that. And the actual fence permit would come with the building permit and the developer would, you know, have to follow our fence building guidelines, which are spelled out in city code. Six foot in the rear yard is fine. In the front yard, there is a four foot limitation. And so if they wanted to be in the front yard with higher than four feet, that would require variance for our fence code.
Right, right. And that's the second question is that, are we thinking that maybe we don't know, is there going to be a fence coming along Devil's Glen Road in the front of those apartments? To dissuade children from going out on Devil's Glen Road?
Yeah, it's not contemplated in the site plan in front of us. That's something that any petitioner could bring forward for any lot, you know, to to build a conforming fence. Yeah, I just, I can't speculate, I don't know.
A third question related to fire turnaround. Is there room here for an engine to pull in and access it?
Yeah, we went through that, they got proper turning radiuses. As far as that hammerhead, it it goes on distance from where you're at to the end of that, so to speak. And we're not backing out on a main highway, so that goes in consideration as well. So it it won't be an issue for us.
Okay, thank you.
I would note, Mr. Chairman. That we did receive some comments, questions, written correspondence. From Mr. Pribble, who had spoke previously and also Mr. Murphy, who'd spoke previously. Mr. Murphy wasn't able to be here, he asked that his questions be addressed. I think Taylor's addressed them for the most part with his presentation, but I don't know if you have a copy of the dais or not.
I don't think I have a copy with me, no.
Yeah, so Taylor, if you wanted to just make note of those and and bring those to light, the ones from Mr. Murphy and Mr. Pribble, that would be helpful.
Uh, put this in the record and chair of the commission. But um, one question was regarding the intention of the applicant to build a fence on the north side. So that has been covered. The other question. Was there any plan to have a berm between the apartments and the edge of the plateau area? This is a bit of a drop off which might lead to a safety issue. It did seem the apartments, buildings were pretty close to the edge. There, that has not been contemplated. The second was any coordination with the, and then we had addressed this at previous meetings. But any coordination with the school district on a bus drop off, buses dropping off kids at this development. You'd expect age five to 15, school age children concerned about safety along the busy street. And the bus stopping at the bottom of Devil's Glen Road would lead to more accidents. So those are the three questions, comments.
And the answer to the school bus question?
So we, at a previous, the rezoning meeting, I believe, we had two of them. We have reached out to the school district after one of those rezoning meetings. We don't coordinate, and I can with Brent, confirm with Brent, we do not coordinate with bus drop offs with the school districts.
They're in charge of that.
Correct. I'm not sure, our fire trucks can get in here, so. I'm guessing a school bus could get in here too, now that's their choice. I don't, won't speak for them. Where they would drop off, if they had to drop off on the street, I'm not sure which side they would. There is technically, you could go underneath Devil's Glen on the east side to the parkway side. That's a lot longer walk, but. We have discussed this before and we haven't coordinated prior and prior developments with those bus sites. And have not with, I've gotten any input on this site as well.
Logic would say pull off in the acceleration or turn lane and put your four way red flashers on and let the kids out at the curb and onto the sidewalk. But that's not something we have control over, completely controlled by the school district.
Doesn't the city though put up, I know like on Belmont, you know, coming down the road, there's. Lights and signs put up that like school bus stop ahead. Is that just something the city does to help the school district or?
Our police, if if they are, if they see issues with their, obviously we have school resource officers that are very aware of the traffic patterns. But not specifically Belmont to most likely is strictly because of the high school, I believe.
And I just, just thinking out loud. The school district must have a drop off already in place for the trailer park that's across the street that does have a number of kids that reside there. So you know, again, this is a school district decision, it's handled by them, but they are performing something similar just across the street right now.
Yeah, and so to Taylor's point, Assistant Fire Chief just looked up the length of their fire engines and they're 41 feet that we have in town. And a 40 foot is standard for a school bus for a full size, so they would have essentially the same turning radius as well. and a 40 foot is standard for a school bus for a full size, so they would have essentially the same turning radius as well, actually a little narrower.
So that addresses all the questions that were submitted?
Yes, and the third was regarding the fence.
Did you get to Mr. Murphy's questions too, were those?
This was, and this was from Rick Murphy, Rick and Janine Murphy.
Okay.
I believe they live in Deerbrook subdivision.
Were there other questions in addition to theirs or no?
Well, there's that berm question, the drop off that he asked.
Well, yeah, the berm question, but I think the answer I heard was no to that.
The question was regarding whether a berm would be placed or some type of, maybe a fence barrier, we'll say, on the top of the bluff to prevent anybody from falling down.
Into the creek, maybe?
Well, it'd be along, along this area right here. These walkout, these apartments, the basement level apartments do show railings. In between the apartment buildings will be bio swell and rip rap, I believe. That's the proper terminology, yes, for stormwater quality. So acts, I mean, you could climb on that apparent, I guess, but that was not contemplated, I guess.
We have a similar development just east of here in Creek Hill, Creek Hill Drive, there's one, two, four, and I believe those were 16 or 20 unit apartment buildings that also do not have any type of restriction like that. They back right up to Duck Creek, just downstream of here.
Okay. Any other questions submitted that we've need to add?
I believe, I had one, but I believe he's, he indicated being in the audience tonight.
There he is, he's ready.
So I let him speak personally and other submitted questions, I do not have any, have not been submitted to the commission.
Okay, all right, the audience, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff. Especially Mr. Beswick, thank you for your time today as well.
Tell us who you are.
Rich Pribble.
Rich, all right, thanks, Rich.
Live in the Deerbrook community, so there's been a lot of concern, I think, with a number of speakers about the density of the proposal. And a lot gets back to that, and I think that also speaks to a number of the problems as, as we get down, down to the site development plan and trying to squeeze all these development units into this area. And I went back through the record and took a look at comments that were made and justifications offered for the transition to R4 and comparing the density of the proposed development at the plat time to, is it the regency apartments? But if you look at page 27 in the comprehensive plan, the regency apartment seems to be indicated in red as a urban high intensity development use. And what was proposed for this area was urban medium intensity. And I think that initial development proposal by the developer was actually slightly more dense than the regency housing up there. And that probably created a lot of the confusion and angst amongst residents and people close to the community. Trying to understand how this really ends up being a medium intensity proposal. With regards to some of my other specific concerns, I, I think some of the questions were answered, but not completely. In looking at note five regarding the berm and the back set of the townhouses off of Devil's Glen Road. It seemed to be either a 50 foot back set or offset from Devil's Glen Road or 35 with an acceptable berm. I don't think I heard council or staff correctly and that they were suggesting that an acceptable berm would be a zero level berm plus 35 feet. Which would require then that you look at a 50 foot offset, which would push all of those townhouses further into the developable parking area. Where we're trying to squeeze in another eight parking spots. The, the scale for the, the parking, I don't have a plotter at home, so I really couldn't get this up to determine what was being assumed for the parking spots. But all the ground floor units, and this gets deeper into the proposal, would have to comply with Fair Housing Act for access and if the proposed parking spots were going to be indicated by unit, which I think they might be, it could be accommodated, but some of those spaces would also have to be larger than what they're proposing in order to provide that kind of access for the units. Specifically looking at the apartment buildings then and their distances between each other. There was a distance for development or for buildings of that size that seemed to indicate it would be based off of the height of the building as an exception. And if I get to my notes on that. So it was in supplemental, supplemental regulations. So site restrictions be equal to the height of the taller building in the case of freestanding unattached buildings other than one, two or two and a half story buildings. The way I read that and interpreted it would be then for the apartment buildings in the front, which are three stories and then up to the roof line, you'd probably be looking at more like 40 feet from the front approach on the apartment buildings for space between them. What wasn't clear to me and how the regulation was written or ordinance would be, how that would be interpreted for the backsides of the residential facilities. Which do show like more like a 50 foot elevation from the ground level up to the peak. And again, there might be room for that. I, I can't see it in there and still trying to get in the proposed parking spaces that, that need to be provided for the units. In looking at the site development plan, there's, really do seem to be some very big access issues associated with the first apartment building. And getting out of those garages that just go right into the traffic plan. Again, there's still probably a lot of things that need to be developed, but these do bring up a lot of questions. The developer, I, I do understand there, there's an exemption for developments in proximity to Duck Creek. However, in looking at some of the other available plans for the Duck Creek watershed management plan, guidance from Iowa DNR, what other states are currently doing. EPAs, calculations and estimations of what that much hardscape in that area would mean for immediate runoff. I, I think it would be significant and currently the plans don't specify anything about provision of a drainage plan or assessment of that. I, I think that would be required to see hydraulically how that would actually impact Duck Creek. Cause there, there's a lot and it's not just the parking lots. There's going to be a lot of water coming off of the roofs on those structures that needs to be considered and how that could erode that area. Additionally, a lot of communities now are looking at infiltration requirements. And infiltration is, is key for providing long-term recharge to Duck Creek in these areas. We get plenty of water flowing off. But unless it continues to provide that during periods of drought, that's where we see the big fluctuations or seemingly so.
Also, they're, they're building on fill. It's all been filled in there. And so I don't know how long you have to wait before you're building that. Just building it, that's what it was or is now.
So I, I did have a question after listening to everything else and then, you know, if the staff can answer that after I leave. For the concerns that were presented regarding the elevation change off of the bottom story units. I'm guessing something needs to be identified in the plans, cause that would be the second point of egress for the units. In the event of a fire in the complexes, so would, wouldn't they have to be able to vacate out?
Yeah, well, once they submit the life safety plan, the architect will, will do it at that point, we'll review it at that point.
Okay.
So it's preliminary.
I, I figured that would.
They get travel distance, they get exception with sprinklers, there's a ton of different exceptions to that rule, so.
Very good, thank you, sir. I, I think that answer, or at least clarify some of my questions and gets all that out and I will relinquish the floor.
Hey, stay there for a minute, Rich, I wanna, in case we need to clarify, but I just want to address a few things that you raised back with, with staff, so one thing I heard, I want a little clarification on is the UMI designation for regency. And I'm thinking the UMI and those classifications came in after regency was there, so maybe they, that got backed into. But can you address the, the concept of the issue?
Again, our code has a future land use map that has areas designated as ULI, urban light, urban median and urban high. The question relative to this site development plan, because that's what we're reviewing today, is, is does that density fit within the UMI future land use designation and the R4 zoning? And staff's answer to that question is yes. I can't give you the history on the regency, I wasn't here when that was zoned. But, you know, from a simple mathematical calculation, the answer is yes.
Okay. And then the, the comments he made about the parking space size, I'm not sure I captured the issue, how it relates, but I just want to make sure I'm clear on what that was.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the question would be, really, everything looks pretty uniform except for the four parking spots that look like they're designated for access, which looked like they would be van accessible spots. But the sizes of the rest of the spots, I, I don't think four spots would be enough really for that area. Again, they'll probably come out, you know, during ADA FHA review. And I'm not sure if that would be through the city or if the developer would undertake that individually. But I think it would require some of those other spots to expand. And if we need to expand currently existing spots, whatever space that seems to be there to squeeze in extra spots to bring the plan in compliance, I, I don't think it'll be there. And consistent with that and some of the other egress issues with the parking that are provided for that first apartment building, like right onto the turn lane. There are just a number of development issues that really make it difficult to see a density of this development being successful in that area without an adverse impact on the surrounding community.
Okay, thanks. And, and Brent, anything in particular relative to the parking space size?
So van accessible spots for this number of parking, which
214.
200, so over 200 requires two van accessible spaces. I believe they're supposed to be 11 feet wide. All the parking stalls that I've scaled so far in this plan are all nine feet wide. But when you take into account any available medians, I think that extra four foot could be accommodated very easily. And that would be a final construction plan review as well when that comes in.
So we would be reviewing the parking space size as part of your final review process?
With the civil rights review.
Yeah, just to be, just to be clear, a little bit background on city processes, as, as we've seen tonight, all these processes are iterative and they start back at the comprehensive planning process. But even after site development plan, these are not construction plans, this is a site development plan, which is one layer of detail, but not the final layer of detail as far as actual vertical construction. So you have yet another layer of review that occurs after, after site development plan is, is approved. And then the building plans come in, those get reviewed by staff from a, from a planning and zoning perspective and then also from a building code perspective. And that includes fire, our building division, engineering, yep, sorry.
We will take a look at those as well.
So, you know, it's not as if someone takes this sheet of paper and then starts building. And I know you all know that, but I think just for the benefit of the audience, how, how iterative this process is. And so if you find something like a missed ADA spot, you know, that has to be addressed. And then, you know, we hold their feet to the fire to do that, both in, with occupancy permits and building permits.
Okay, thanks. The question you had about the height of the building and whether the height in the front and the back would have a difference requirement in the distance between the buildings, I think, is what that was relating to?
Correct.
Brent, did you hear that?
Yeah, ultimately that, not, that's a building discussion, but I believe it's measured from, I believe, the, the garage entries. But I, I'm not positive, I'm not, that wouldn't be.
Are you asking what the maximum height of the building is or the separation?
If I understood.
Separation is dependent on what that measured distance is, correct? I believe is what Mr. Pribble's asking. So what, if the building's measured at 40 feet in the front and 50 in the back, which dimension do you use?
Right.
And I'm fairly certain it is the front dimension.
The maximum stories for this district is three stories. Above grade, so we, we, this is consistent with what we apply to single family homes. If you are above grade, so if you have a walkout in your backyard that goes down a hill, that's not considered part of the maximum height for your structure. So that's for the height. The height for, maximum for this district is three stories. Or I believe it says a, I can't, I do not, it's a number of feet. We typically apply the stories, but that's what the code says, so as far as the, that distance, I, I do not know the, that by, it's, it historically had been 30 feet from apartment, apartment buildings for 30 feet separation. So I can look into that specific one, but.
That would be part of that iterative process as well, yeah, okay. Drainage, there was some reference to drainage and the need for evaluation, but my, my perspective typically is when you're in proximity to the creek, you want it to flow.
That's correct, so the, one of the items Mr. Pribble mentioned was basically the infiltration, so that would be the water quality component that we are requiring. So they have that between a mix of bio cells and hydrodynamic separator manhole. Just to put the, the water quality perspective for the size of Duck Creek, straight from the Duck Creek watershed plan. Duck Creek's got almost a 41,000 acre watershed. And you gotta realize, we are almost, we are a mile from the very downstream end of Duck Creek and we're talking about three acres of hard surface, so really a.
Material, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
But a good point.
One comment in between about building on fill, but that would be evaluated as part of the construction process for the bearing capability and what's buried below when you start digging.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, we have that in our, in our building codes.
Compaction study, yep.
Yep, okay. I think we got them all, thank you, appreciate it.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name's Steve Tomitich, I own the north, my property is his northern boundary.
You're the neighbor, okay.
And 1222 Devil's Glen Road is where I'm from. My question, I have a couple of questions. My first one is, if you only have, say you have 10 acres of buildable ground. But, I mean, you have 10 acres in a plot, but you only have five acres of buildable ground. Do you consider the density, I, problem on the 10 acres or the five acres?
I can, I can.
Five acres buildable, 10 acres altogether.
We're with you, okay, Mark?
That's, that's a great question and, and I would remind the commissioners, because this came up before. And, and the ability for the city to secure that forever access agreement that created the trail. We had to, we had to have an agreement, put it in, put in writing. And so there's a horse trading that's going on and in the 1990s or whenever that was done to create that trail. They said, we'll agree to give you that access easement in perpetuity forever, so you can have the bike path. But any future development, you cannot hold the ground we gave way to against us in terms of density by the city. So that's a fair question and I think it, it begs to be questioned, or begs to be answered. But in order for us to secure and create the bike path, that's the deal that was made. So now that chicken's come home to roost and that developer is saying, okay, I gave you the access for the bike path across my private property, you can't count. You can't count that against me in terms of density for my future development.
But but the the ten acres is down to five because of floodplain and not public access bike path. It's floodplain. You cannot build down there. You cannot use that down there. You cannot do anything down there. But five acres is buildable.
So city floodplain does allow you to build within our floodplain as long as you elevate two feet above the flood level.
Okay.
So you are allowed, that is developable.
Okay, all right. What what do you, what number do you use then to consider your density ratio or whatever you're using? Do you use the ten acres or do you use the five?
So I think I've answered that. So it's the whole ten acres in this case.
Because.
I didn't hear him.
He said, he said the whole full ten acres is the denominator.
Even though, even though, okay, all right, all right. Now my next question is, my border is his northern border, my property. I need to know, is he gonna put up a retaining wall? Or is he moving dirt out of that area? That's the highest point of his lot is here. The rest of it is, he's either gonna dig this down and move this out. Or what I need to know is, am I gonna, if he puts up a wall, there is a lot of water that comes down that hillside, down across my property, down across his property, down to the creek. If he builds a wall, he's gonna make a lake, he's putting up a lake, a dam against that water. What do I, are you gonna turn my backyard into a lake? Or is it, am I gonna be able to, you know, is, I need to know what the northern border, what he's going to do with that northern. The fence thing, I need to, I'm not looking for people to come across over onto my property or my neighbors' properties. That's the fence deal. And I understand the four feet, the eight feet, the ten, whatever you were talking. But what I do not know is what is he going to do with that northern northern border? Is he gonna put up a berm? Is he gonna put up a wall?
I see an engineer here. Can he shed some light on that?
Hi there, Chris Townsend, Townsend Engineering. I didn't work on this in detail, but I do know there's no wall shown there. The idea is just to grade that.
He's gonna.
Right, and we can't.
They're gonna grade down my slope and make that all kind of a bank.
Right, and there's no, and we cannot impede your water. Right, so we cannot stop water coming off your property.
You can't stop, you can't.
Absolutely not, that's.
Chris, I think there is actually a small retaining wall at the at the edge of the parking drive, not at the property line. So what that would be, what I'm anticipating would be at grade at the height of the top of the wall, so not impeding any water. And that's just gonna let them drop that roadway down.
Okay.
Three, four, five feet.
As long as the property is that, I don't care what happens.
Yeah, they can't build up.
If he comes down, is he gonna put a wall in there? He's not gonna put a wall. I need to be able to move that water. That's been a problem all along.
Years, years. Yeah, they cannot impede it.
Yeah, that definitely.
The water should still flow. Yep, thanks. Anyone else regarding this matter? Yes.
Hi there, I'm Michael Galvin. I live at the Creek Hill condos. And just to the west of those condos are some apartments. And our condos where the people live and take care of the stuff and don't rent out are very, very nice and we keep them very nice. You don't have to worry about stuff going down into the creek. You go half a block to the west where the apartments are, where people don't have any incentive to take care of things. And I tell you what, behind those apartments, you're gonna have beer bottles, pop bottles, McDonald's bags, you're gonna have trash all over the place. This is, we're putting basically ten pounds into a five pound bag here. There's just, it's just gonna destroy the the whole area. It doesn't conform. It isn't like, one of these things is not like the others. This is what you're going to do with that gem? Really? That's a good idea? Really? Thank you.
Can I just ask you, I want to make sure I heard, did you say gem?
Gem.
Okay.
I'm sorry, new braces, bad mouth.
No, I just want to make sure I heard it. So, yeah, and and just for perspective too, as I go look at, there's this thing definitely has been a challenge. But I look at it something not a gem. I look back at the aerials and the photographs and I see literally a junkyard. That place was terrible. It was aesthetically awful. And from that standpoint, I think this does show an opportunity for an improvement because the prior use was nonconforming and an eyesore, and that's being kind frankly.
Touche.
Yep, but just, and we're not here to to spar, but different perspectives. So thank you, appreciate it.
I'm just afraid that this is the wrong way to go. There's gotta be a better use for that. It does have, it has, like, I think we agree completely that it's got all kinds of potential. But this, I think, is a potential nightmare. You're going, you're going from bad to worse.
Thank you, appreciate it. Others in the audience, yes. You can be next. Lady in the red is next.
Still Patrick Lean, had to write some stuff down. First, echoing some earlier comments, I'd like to congratulate you for getting me interested in local governance. I didn't make the April meeting because I was retiring from the Army and we were not part of the local area that got the signage informing us. But I did read the minutes of that meeting and became concerned about the rezoning without dissent. So as I understood it, the entire assembly looked at each other and said, yep, we all agree with this. That's what happened. Nobody thought this was a bad idea. Okay, got it. Already mentioned the traffic pattern, adding two hundred plus cars, many of which will occupy the left lane turning from south to north. That means anybody coming from central has only one lane to get across Devil's Glen, right? Because that left turn lane going into that apartment complex will then be full. So you then have to dodge two lanes of traffic coming south, one lane of traffic, two lanes of traffic going north, but one's gonna slam to a complete halt right in front of this complex. Does that make sense?
I'm following your logic.
All right, very good. Additionally, as already discussed, we add a massive amount of concrete to that particular corner. The the concept that that's not gonna affect drainage is beyond belief. I mean, so as just discussed, as the water drains drains down from this gentleman's property here, it's then gonna travel across a river of concrete into a series of garages?
No, that's not what we said.
But but he didn't say the water drains from his property south.
That's correct, but did you hear about, did you hear about the bio swales in the other discussion?
That's at the south end.
Yeah, it will travel across. And if you look at the aerial now, there's a lot of concrete out there now.
The site has its own internal storm sewer system. There are two bio cells and a hydrodynamic separator. So it's got its own collection system that then pipes that water south of the trail.
So you're saying this is a non-issue?
Correct. It has to be collected on site.
All right. Additionally, the fence line issue that we talked about earlier, I think this is a real problem. You're talking about this is gonna be younger, families with younger kids, and there's no fence on the south end with a fifty foot drop off. A lot of people ride bikes really fast on a trail. Does anybody in the, on this committee who live within a half mile of this area?
No, I ride it all the time, but I know what you're talking about.
Know what I mean? People are going thirty miles an hour, right? Some two year old gets on that trail coming out of an apartment building, we get a potential disaster on our hands.
And that's that's a risk we have all over town, frankly, but I hear you.
We don't abet that many apartment complexes to that kind of risk. So, if any, any questions to me? Thanks for.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate the input. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dee Dee Fowler and I live at thirty-three seventy-five Oakery Lane. And I have, I attended the May and June city council meetings on this. And I'm honestly like floored that it has gotten this far because nobody that I talk to about this, my neighbors, people across from Hallview Park, because Hallview Park is essentially my backyard. And like our friends who live off of the twenty-third, twenty-third Avenue, anyone who uses the bike path is impacted by this. So this is not your normal large parcel in the middle of Bettendorf that is getting rezoned and a development is getting on it. Because how many other parcels impact so many citizens outside of the direct corridor of where this is located? I can't think of any. And I don't think that on your ninety-five acre park out of, off of Forest Grove, are you putting in a car, an apartment complex or townhouses of this size right up to that park anywhere? I don't believe so. So that's something to just to keep in mind. A lot of us that live in the area, we utilize the park. You yourself said you ride your bike there. And what do you enjoy about it? The green, the nature, the tranquility, the serenity. Everyone also that I talked about it, we really take pride and we utilize what you guys have given us in the Duck Creek Bike Path, which is what you would want. It's amenity that so many of us use, even people from Davenport use it. So I am here for a third time speaking on this issue. But my first time at this meeting, and I'm begging you to postpone the zoning or at least going ahead with this proposal until enough people get notoriety, notice about it just because the two hundred foot rule in this instance only impacts a few houses. And yet this develop, this development impacts so many people throughout the entire area, not just on Devil's Glen. It's, it is Deerbrook, like it affects a lot of people in Deerbrook, it affects us. It affects anyone who utilizes the Duck Creek Parkway because the area that this parcel on two sides, the back side and then, and then the other side. It is a, it is right adjacent to one of the prettiest and most buffered areas of the bike path. It's where you get the most nature, which is what we're supposed to enjoy and make sure we get part of our lives. It's relaxing, it's calming from the hustle and bustle of every day. And we're using it, we're enjoying it, and then now you're saying, well, we're gonna take that away. The most special part of the bike path, and I'm not the only one who thinks that, other people have said that. There's a special rock formations right there also. There's a plaque because of them being special that someone erected within the last ten years. And now along that whole back, backside and then the left side, you're going to have three very large apartment apartment complexes as well as townhouses. And if you look in the area of the houses that this is going to be next to, it absolutely does not fit. Like, it's almost laughable that honestly, it has gotten this far. And I really feel for the homeowners that are so close to this. If you look, the dog park, isn't the blue house that is, is it north? I'm sorry, I'm not sure.
That's north, that's north, yeah.
I mean, aren't they gonna be looking down onto the dog park? Isn't noise possibly going to be an issue for them? When I first heard about this, and it wasn't through notices, it wasn't through the Quad City Times, but because of this, I now have a subscription to the Quad City Times. My initial concerns were, number one, traffic. Traffic already has gotten so much worse on Devil's Glen. Is it, is it a nightmare? No. But you are talking about two hundred more cars. And there's no other through streets. You have Middle Road and then you have State Street. And so that's highly traveled and you can't get, if you, if you want to get anywhere in Bettendorf, you have to go in either of those, on either of those streets. The second one is safety. Right now, the bike path, I don't think we hear of many muggings. I don't think there's much crime on the bike path. But there's also no other medium density complexes directly next to the bike path anywhere, to my knowledge. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that's correct. And you can't consider that you're putting a hundred and thirty-five people in that small area that that's not going to be an impact. There's gonna be more crime, traffic, the environmental impact, litter being a huge issue. And also, what about the noise? Again, the bike path, we like that area specifically for the tranquility, the green, the nature. And you're, you're wanting to take that and almost do the opposite. I just, I don't understand that. I don't understand the thinking behind it. There's also an ecological impact. And it was my understanding that originally in the seventies, when it was zoned medium density, R three or R four, that it was, the intention was that it was going to be twenty-four townhouses. Is that correct?
I don't know how many there were.
Exploded, so it reverted back to R four. I was at the meeting at the vote, the city council meeting. But now it's not just twenty-four townhouses or townhomes, it is a hundred and twenty-six units. And you're acting like, well, this is the best use. Everyone that, every Bettendorf citizen who does not have a vote like you do is against this, except the builder and the developer and the property owner. Everyone that I have spoken to just thinks this is not a good idea. It is the opposite of what should be going there. Again, I have no problem with the original nineteen seventies twenty-four units. That seems acceptable. I would prefer they be owned, not rented, because we all take pride in our properties. We all enjoy living next to the bike path and adjacent to that special green space, and we'd like to keep it special. And again, at the city council meetings, I just kept saying, well, this is the best use. This is the best use. I think we would all disagree with that.
I'm curious, would you feel it's better than the last use or this is worse than the last use, which was a junkyard?
Yes, by far, yes.
You're not saying an eyesore is more important than safety, are you?
No, and we had a traffic study done to validate that it was properly being developed from a safety standpoint, but go ahead, please.
But I believe it was brought up at the city council meeting, and I could be wrong because I, I definitely make mistakes. But I think with that traffic study, was that only five days?
Only five days. So in terms of traffic volumes, the counts?
No, when did they do that? Wasn't the study a duration of, they studied the traffic pattern for five days?
You study volumes for that, but we also use the data that the DOT collects over the years, which actually shows a decreasing volume on that portion of Devil's Glen. Numbers don't lie, folks. The DOT does this every four years to last twenty years.
They just had the rubber lines all over town collecting data again. It's.
Do it again, and it may show an increase.
You can call them liars, but that's what the, that's what the traffic count was. It's, it's the reality.
Reason to make up data.
Right. I know, I know you're not making it up. I was just curious.
Or the number of accidents.
So that was, yes, everything was categorized in the traffic study, the number of accidents.
So I know that the two hundred foot rule, like, you sent out notices and I did see the signs there. I did see the signs, although I think a lot of people would appreciate the signs if they were down along the bike path. Because most people don't know that this is happening. And I think if it goes through, they will be shocked and they will wish that it had not gone through and that they had been more proactive about it. But without centralized news sources anymore and everyone being so busy, a lot of people who I think would be very vocal in opposition to this, who would matter, I don't think they're aware of it. And there, again, there are so many people outside of the two hundred foot policy of those who get notified that would be very, that would, that would have very valuable voices. But again, this is no ordinary parcel, because it affects so many people outside of just the immediate area, because it is so well utilized, which is wonderful. And so the dog park, I was not aware of that. That has changed, and I feel for the, the house that is going to be right next to that. I don't think the setbacks are enough, considering that there are houses along, I believe it's the northern edge. And then also the trees. I believe Mr. Hunt said at the last city council meeting, that we don't have to worry, because all the existing trees, or most of the existing trees, will stay in place. But I, there's actually quite a few trees that, that would buffer this apartment complex, or, I think it's north, I think it's the north, and the residents who currently have homes there. And that, I don't see how those trees are going to stay, according to your drawing. And of course, we want the trees. One moment, sorry. Yeah, so we value the bike path for its serenity and beauty, and this is not doing that justice, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience?
Yes, Rick Kibler again, 1304. I'm reiterating a couple things that she's brought up, that the council maybe hasn't taken consideration is, environmental wise. I don't think this is the best use. I, I understand it's viable, and because I'm a property owner myself, and I understand building apartments and getting the process done, and what it took to get me, my house that was built there, I had to jump through hoops and do things, and you guys didn't let me for 20 years till I finally got you to do it. This time, I think you're wrong in the density-wise, and why we need this bigger project there. I don't mind being developed, but not to this extent. I think it's overdeveloped, and I understand that they're trying to get the most out of their buck, but it's way too much. And I feel the council should take that into consideration, and they should scale this back some, so it fits our neighborhood, and fits our lifestyle, instead of overdoing it. And I think that's what's happened here. You've guys went overboard with the development person, that they squeeze everything out of it. You made me and my family restrict and do things that I didn't want to do, but I had to do it, because of zoning restrictions and things of that nature. Well, I'm saying this one's the same way. It's too much, and we need to scale it down. I don't mind if they do it, they have to scale it down. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Okay, back to the commission. You guys still with me here?
Yeah.
Taylor, could you go over the, what is the northern boundary setbacks? I don't see them on here.
Let's go to the other site plan, shows it clear. So the area Commissioner Stoltenberg is referring to is the setback, considered a side yard. The requirement for that setback is based, because this is a R4 zoning district, adjacent to a lesser intense zone district. The setback is relative to the height of those adjacent buildings, so in this case, it's the townhomes, and that is at grade height. The threshold required, the height of those buildings required a 20-foot setback at this location. In actuality, these will be set, based on topography, the height of those buildings will be much lower than the Tomitich property, or at level, I believe, that...
Yeah, the finished floor elevation they're showing is 611. I don't know how tall the buildings are, but the Tomitich property, you can see the last contour is 633. So that's 23 feet right there.
But there's buffer requirements for zoning, when zoning districts are, this occurs for commercials as well, and other zoning districts, we have buffer requirements, and this is, in that case, this is met. The only infrastructure is some, a parking, a pavement located here. Everything else is clear.
So it does meet the setback requirement?
Yes, yes. The, the structures meet the setback requirements for that side yard. Otherwise, in an R4 zoning district, there'd be, say, if there was another R4 zoning district, you could have five, I believe, feet. But that's not the case here, obviously.
So the taller building down there, does that have a bigger setback requirement than the townhouse-type building up at the east end? The one at the west end there, yeah. It looks like the same line going across, but that could be adequate for both of them, I don't know.
The, the standard, the standard setback is the same, it's the same distance.
For those two different height buildings?
Yeah.
So the maximum height would be, there's different thresholds. I believe the setback could have been reduced to 15 feet if the townhouses were not as tall, but did not meet that threshold. I don't have that memorized, that exact, but it did meet the, it was, needed, required the 20-foot setback.
So you're saying the structures meet?
20 feet from the house, from, from the property, or from that house, in the, the neighbor, from the property line.
The property line.
Yep, we got, we got to put it on the, on the mic.
You're talking about a three-story structure that is going to be huge, because it's long.
Yep, if we're gonna have comment, we gotta pick you up on the mic.
You can go back to the mic again.
So the, the structures meet?
Correct, yes.
What about the parking, though? You did, if I understood you, you said that is in the setback.
That is allowed, we allow parking inside, yeah, not front yard setbacks.
So I have another question. I don't recall it, well, it wouldn't have come up at the last meeting, this would be the first meeting it came up at. We, we had a, this was a really big deal when they put those apartment buildings up close to the road, on Middle Road, really big deal, to the point where we changed the ordinance.
On Middle Road? Mm-hmm, yeah, the multicolored ones.
Over by the water.
The macro mirror ones, the multicolored ones.
Yep. It was, it was, I actually thought they ended up looking pretty nice when they were all said and done, but it was a big deal, we ended up changing, that's what created this 50-foot versus 35-foot, if I recall correctly. So my question is, why are we abandoning that now? The, and I understand, we put a turn lane in there, but that's not, that's still not, wouldn't explain.
They didn't abandon that.
Hold on, I got the floor now.
Yep.
And, and since I'm actually arguing something on your side.
Might be a good time to listen, right.
Not saying which direction I'm going, but I'm questioning, why have we abandoned the 50-foot rule that we put in place in this situation? I understand it doesn't make sense to have a front door, have a berm, I get all that. But why have we abandoned the 50-foot?
So the applicant had shown in the concept plan, front doors, which is the desired aesthetic and the design that has been previously constructed on Devil's Glen 53rd. Our, we don't have design specifics for our multifamily, I mean, they are shown in the renderings, but we, unless it's in a designated downtown district, or one of our overlay districts, that is not necessarily part of the code. If a berm was in place, not talking safety, but if a berm was in place, the applicant would propose, I believe, to not, I mean, there would not be no point of having the front doors. There'd more be like a sliding glass doors and a patio, because there'd be no function, the front yard would no longer be functional.
I don't think you're getting to what my question is. If, if it's 50-foot or 35-foot with a berm, so if we can't justify putting a berm there, then why aren't we back to 50 feet?
For a setback.
I thought it was mentioned that it's 35-foot.
I think, I think the either/or is, is not exactly correct, it's either/or at the pleasure of the planning, zoning commission, and council.
Okay.
So you have, you have, and you have the right to determine what is an acceptable berm, from zero to whatever, right? And so that is, that is within your purview.
Thank you for the clarification.
Staff's recommendation would be that an acceptable berm would be of zero height, because we do have the concern of outgoing traffic having now looked up into a berm.
At 35 feet.
But have we answered the question of 35 versus 50?
It's at our discretion, is what he's saying.
I wasn't on the council for those, on the road at the time.
That, that, at that time, we were stuck with 35 feet period.
And you made the change?
After that.
To get the street from street to...
We were actually stuck, it was a 25-foot setback at that point, so...
Years ago.
A few circumstances, because you, you had 10 less feet mandated, and you also had three-story buildings up against.
But you could mitigate it with 35 if, if you bermed it. And here we're talking about zero berming at 35, which means...
Now we're back to Middle Road.
A little tough, yeah.
How would they, how would they access the front doors? I see a couple of what looks like sidewalks, one in each building, basically. So how are they gonna get to the proposed front door from the sidewalk on Devil's Glen? Because I don't see, back in that other, in the site plan, Taylor, it showed, it looked like just one between, about the middle of each building, it looks like there might be some kind of walk going to the door, but I don't see how you're gonna access the proposed front doors.
I defer to the applicant, but I believe there'd be, I was, under interpretation, there'd be sidewalks in addition to...
Connecting to the sidewalk.
Correct, yes.
The public sidewalk.
Yes.
But they're not shown on there.
It's drawn in there. There's, there looks like there's two or three sidewalks, one right there, one right there.
Is that, or is that a sewer?
Probably where those apartments, up on 53rd and Devil's Glen on the east side, those new buildings, they have little sidewalks, and the front door facing Devil's Glen, that's probably like this.
Yeah, I'm just not seeing a sidewalk from each unit to the side, a side, a private sidewalk to the public sidewalk. I only see what looks like a couple, maybe, in there.
Big dish share.
Yeah. Well, then they'd have to have a feeder sidewalk along the front of the entire building, which is where I'm showing trees, and where, where's that gonna be? Can we get any clarification from?
I'm Dave Kippen, developer. As far as the sidewalks, this is a remnant from when we were going with the berm, with a kind of a backyard design. Since then, I think talking with Taylor, it was preferred to go with the front door design, so we didn't get the sidewalks in there yet. But there will be three sidewalks on each building, each townhouse building, so six sidewalks total connecting to the sidewalk from the doors.
So one sidewalk coming in and kind of feed two doors, then?
Yes, very similar to the ones on near 53rd.
Taylor, can you go back to your list of conditions and exceptions, and those things that you aren't here on what we're reading right now, that you've identified?
Correct.
That you have code concerns of building spacing, some things that are missing, basically, from what's in front of us. Can you go back to that list?
Sure, and they were added verbally, so I can...
No, I, I think some of them, oh, you don't have them bulleted up there, they're just...
I don't think I have them all.
Okay, I jotted some of them down.
It was eight spots.
One of them was eight spots, it was the distance between your buildings, between the townhomes and the apartments.
And the berm requirement with the 3A.
Number one would be the required parking, it's not met.
We're, we're short on spaces.
Eight spots. Number two would be the separate, the distance separation between the townhomes is required to be 15 feet. It's, so, it's at 13, 13 feet right now.
Okay.
Second, or third, sorry, is the distance separation between the apartment buildings is 30 feet, from what I understand. It's shown it's 29, a little over 29 feet for one separation, and 20 feet for, like, 21 feet for the other separation. So those need to meet code as well.
So those are code concerns, and the berm is at our discretion, right?
Correct, we are recommending the berm for safety, and then...
We're recommending not doing a berm, but we should. But then we're back to 35 feet if we have a berm, back, or one or the other. I just feel like there's a lot missing from what we're being asked to approve tonight. And now we've just asked, you've just asked the sidewalk question that's not shown here. I'm inclined, personally, I would, I mean, what's in front of me that we're being asked to approve, we're putting an awful lot of faith in this missing information. And is it, maybe this is a procedural question, but I don't recall approving something like this with that many exceptions. There are, they're not just exceptions, they're code concerns.
Those would all have to be resolved before taking the city council.
Would be better, would be better off to wait. And I would ask for this to be resubmitted.
That's certainly an option, you could, you could table or defer the case at this point. Actually, postpone would be the right, probably the right motion, would be to postpone the case, that's one option. You could also get, I'm flying without an attorney tonight, you could also condition those at the dais, so you could say, our, our recommendation is based on these conditions that have been outlined here tonight. We did that recently, this evening, with a, moving from a traditional rezoning to a conditional rezoning, and you would just enumerate those conditions. I will tell you, every site plan that comes through, when it gets to the building phase, has things that we have to find and correct. That's just the nature of going from planning to building, the specific nature of those two, the level of detail are different, so, but those are your options. You could make a down recommendation, you could make an up recommendation as presented. You have, all of those powers are yours.
Mark, could you identify that, that there was an issue about the sidewalk, making sure that those, that was one of the items, the other one was the building differences? What were the other items?
Yeah, so the staff has no code concerns relative to their sidewalks, they can have private walks or not, that is not, in our purview, it's not codified in any way that he had to have private sidewalks. Kind of remembering how we got here is, between planning and zoning, commission and city council was the concept that's making this conditional, requiring a front door aesthetic on the Devil's Glen, Devil's Glen side of the road. I don't think that included those private walkways, how those are arranged or divided. It was more that they wanted to, they being, this commission and the city council wanted to see more of a, a front yard look at that approach. So they, they, when you start making these conditions, you have the horse trading that's going on, and, and part of that included, well, 35 feet and no berm, to have a front yard appear like a front yard, and not a hillside, a reasonable request, I would, I would guess. So, you know, that's kind of how we got to the decision point today. I certainly understand the reservations in the room, and, you know, happy to keep answering questions, but, you know, the vote is yours.
I guess I don't see that there are any impediments that can't be worked out as in the normal course of these discussions. Do you see it differently?
No, I, you know, we would take this to council, and we would include in our staff report, any conditions you decided to add this evening, with whatever recommendation you make.
Thank you.
I'm still a little confused, Brent, maybe you can answer this. So... So your staff is recommending that, that the berm go away.
Yeah.
Right, for safety sake.
Right, staff is saying.
For safety's sake and for sightlines and, and I understand all that. But then we have a 35 foot setback, correct, with no berm? Where's the 50 foot setback that you all put in place on after Middle Road? Why, why then?
Yep, so again, the way, nope, so the way, the way the code reads is 50 or 35 foot, and you can define the berm at 35 foot, you can define that berm as zero if you want to and still have it be 35 feet. You get that play in the code. So the code allows you to define a berm of one inch to one foot if you want to, three inches to three feet. You get that play, a berm that is, um, at the pleasure of the commission and the council. So you can define a berm as zero if you want to, if the site has certain, um, certain characteristics that, that require that or demand that. And I, I would say in some ways, this commission, by making them have front doors, has already made that decision.
Why even have the difference between 50 and 30? I don't understand.
Middle Road's a crossing to go home first.
That's right.
So no berm, can we say no berm in 50 feet? Is that the way that you added the language to the middle road?
50 foot would not require a berm. Yeah, 50 foot, their berm is not a requirement.
Yeah.
At all, at 35 feet.
Within our power, you're suggesting we suggest no berm if that's what we want to do.
Yeah, you have, you can, you can add whatever conditions you want, um, you know, within reason, within code. So if you were to say 50 foot, that's something, that's a condition you could make this evening if you wanted to. That would be, that would be a true statement. If it, if it pleases commission that 50 foot and no berm is more acceptable? Yeah.
Let's hear from the developer owner back there too, he's been patient.
Um, just in regards to potentially delaying.
I pull that a little closer, I have a hard time picking it up.
In regards to potentially delaying a vote, um, there is financing locked in a while back on this project. Uh, we don't, no interest rates have gone up three quarters of a point plus potentially another point, which could put in a position where then it's no longer, you know, um, viable at that point in time and, and it might kick it down the road another 20 years. Um, so I, you know, if we can do something to vote on it and, and either, you know, potentially proceed tonight, um, that would be definitely preferred, otherwise it would, it would effectively almost cancel the, the viability of it. I know, I know that's not a city council or a, a planning zoning issue, but it's, it's the reality of the, this development.
I think my biggest concern personally is, you know, something we've discussed many, many times. Just a lot in a little bit of space, you know? And sometimes things feel like you've got 10 pounds being shoved into a five pound bag, you know, that analogy that we use a lot, but it literally is on this one. Literally is because of the buildable space allowance of what is 10 acres worth of space being put into five. And I just, I don't think it's, I don't think it's good for the area, I don't think it's safe and I don't think it benefits the neighborhood.
Unfortunately, I mean, the, the occupant or the density in the zoning piece, that ship's already sailed with the rezoning.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, has the rezoning made this question, that ship sailed, right? I mean, the, uh, the density.
It's our, it's our four.
And so now we're trying to make maybe what's not a great situation better with some of these other tweaks, right? And some of these tweaks that you're suggesting aren't here, they're not shown. We're asking for some faith, I guess, that they're going to show up.
Well, there's several issues here, one is how far back it should be set. The, the density issue is a different issue. And it meets the density requirement, we've established that. So that's not the issue. But the issue I think we were talking about is how far back it should be set. Is it 35 feet, is it 50 feet? I don't know. One question I had to that point is that, you know, I go past the development on the corner of 53rd and, and Devil's Glen regularly. And I think those are, those apartments or those townhouses on the east side.
That's, that's exactly.
And that sign of like what this reminds me of, I don't know how far those are set back from Devil's.
25 foot setback, I just measured. So that was under our existing rules. Again, that 50, if I can say, was, was rather arbitrary, quite frankly, that it was a, a result of that one project. And now I think we've seen some negative impacts of some other projects, the, the dull and tangle foot project, I believe. You know, I don't think that berm with 50 feet has been well received, for example. So I, I don't, I don't think it's a true, this fit everything type of situation. You guys have the, the decision.
No. No, I, I don't even, you, you're done?
Yeah, yeah.
The comment is probably closed.
Go ahead, we'll take a couple more comments from the audience, if it's new comments.
Faster bedtime.
Yes, it is.
Mine too.
All of us.
Well, first of all.
Inner time too.
I just thank you for considering slowing this process down. Because as we mentioned earlier, many of us didn't know about the first meetings and sometimes it just feels like there's such a rush to make the decisions and the public doesn't have a chance to really voice their feelings. And so I just, I really appreciate you actually thinking about slowing it down a little bit, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, one more from the audience and we're going to go back to the commission and figure out what we're doing here.
Thank you and thank you for your time, I appreciate what you guys do. Um, I just want to say, kind of in regards to what you were just commenting on about how it seems like you're putting a lot in a little bit of space. Um, when I was walking my dogs before the first city council meeting that I was going to attend on this, I stopped at, um, I think it's the third house over, gray house, they have a white, a little white dog. Um, and I happened to ask them if they knew what was going, uh, just a couple houses down, if, if they were aware of the development. And they had not received any notice at that time, or at least that they were aware of. And this would have been in May. And, and they were in opposition to it because they, they live in very close proximity to, proximity to this. But one of the things that she told me as we were discussing it very briefly, is how they have lived there a long time and they loved how we, we, most of us in that area, our houses are probably from the seventies, some, some from before, but we have large lots. Like we have trees and we have large lots. Not overly large, but, but relatively large. And we like, it's, it's, um, it's not an overly urban atmosphere, I guess. And so to get to your point is, this does not fit the surrounding areas. A lot of them are small, um, smaller homes. And then you're putting these three story, very long apartment complexes right up, right up to that. And even with the like 20 foot setback, it's, that's not very much. You know, when you look at it in person, that's just not enough. But again, it's, you're putting this more urban feel in a more somewhat like rural, very casual, we, we love our green space, we like, we like the nature aspect that we have. We like all the wild animals that happen to wander into our yards. And so please just keep that in mind, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, back to the commission.
I would ask the chairman if you consider, or if the commission would consider, um, postponing this. Not because I wish to do the developer any harm or cause this to go away, that's not my intent. I just think there's some pieces missing for us to make a good decision tonight.
Can you articulate what pieces are missing?
All the conditions that, that, the.
Just articulate what the pieces are missing is all I would like to hear.
Certainly, page number two of the staff raise a report, second paragraph on page two, we've got a statement that says all of their site development regulations, including lot dimensions, buffers, building separation and building height are met in regard to the townhomes. Next paragraph down, the last sentence in that paragraph on page two, uh, that starts with apartment buildings, the last sentence there says all of their site regulation, development regulations, including lot dimensions, buffer, building separation and building height are met for our zoning, zoning district in regard to the three multifamily apartment buildings. What Taylor has just told us is that's not true.
Could I make a comment on this?
Please.
I agree with you, Lynn, this is, this is sloppy for us to push this, put this forward. We've many times, as, as Mark said, we've, we've added conditions to these things. Uh, the developer is asking us whether we vote it in a positive way or a negative way to move it forward. So I would say we can make some comments here and discuss it. And I would suggest if the developer does want to risk the possibility that he gets a no vote on this and still take it to the city council, which he can do, I mean, he needs a super majority, I believe, in the city council to pass it. I, I think we maybe should give the developer the opportunity to say, hey, I want to get a vote tonight, one way or the other.
As opposed to postponing?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm just, one point of clarification, I would have to double check code. In a rezoning, a down vote would require a super majority. In this case, the recommendation would require a super majority vote. On a site development plan, I'm going to say, I'm not sure, and I would have to double check that. But you know, that's why we have a city attorney who reviews all those things before they.
Who is not here tonight.
We have someone doing dual duty tonight, um, but yeah, so. You know, on a site development plan, I'm not sure in fact that a super majority at council is created by a negative recommendation from this body.
But it can't go forward to the city council with us giving some sort of a yes or no.
Yeah, the, the, so it, it moves forward to city council with a up vote or a down vote from this recommending body. The, another option is, um, postponement. Your motion to up vote or down vote it can't contain the conditions we discussed tonight or not.
I would just like to ask the developer, before we have any more discussion, yes or no? Do you want us to proceed regardless or not?
Kind of put on the spot here, but, uh.
You are, but it's late and we don't want to go around and round for a half hour and then get to a point where we have to ask you the same question.
You know, I, I, yeah, I mean, if it came down to that, I'd say defer it, but it, so, some of these issues are, I guess, pretty easy, you know, um, to engineer and, and could be cranked out if we knew about them. Um, a couple days ago, we could have had it updated already. Um, and the city's had it for several weeks, um, like the, the spacing between the, the buildings. So that, that's something I, I would feel fairly confident that, you know, as, as a planning zoning, you, you would, know that it would be an easy to self-condition on, on approval. I guess the only one that would be tough is the 50 versus 35, because it was passed based on substantially the same site plan, which would 35, um, when the zoning was passed. So now, now we're changing, it's kind of putting the developer, me in the gray area, like what, what is substantially the same? Is that throwing it out of, you know, uh, the design off of what was originally passed, which is what the zoning was conditional on? Um, but if, if, if you had to make a recommendation, I'd say, yeah, defer it, if that's, that's the, um, the gamble versus discussing it more.
What was your understanding when the 35 foot setback from the previous, um, meetings had been referenced relative to the berming or not berming?
There was no, um, I guess, discussion on the berms, but originally the concept was like, make, like, the fronts look like a front door, because that was well received by the, the city. Um, then, then it was discussed about the berm with that, which then is really compatible, on a compatible design, then we'd want a backyard with a patio and a berm that kind of isolates it from the road. Either way, it's doable, it's, it's more of what is a city preference, uh, a front yard with a sidewalk? And a, you know, if it's a six inch berm, so sidewalk can go over it or, you know, but a six foot berm would just make it kind of a awkward design. If, if that answers your question.
Yeah, it, that, that's one I'm, I'm tripping over a little myself because if you'd asked me before, I'd say, okay, we approved or looked at approving the 35 foot conceptual was 35 foot, but my assumption was, or perception was that there would be some kind of tangible berm in that. And to realize that there could be zero because of the reasons described gives me a processing challenge. So, okay, I, I don't like it being 35 feet, but with an adequate berm, I'm more acceptable, it's more acceptable to me. At 50 feet, it's not an issue because there is no berm. Now the fact of 35 and zero for logical reasons is just like, well, but we, we want berms perspectiveally, if that's a word, when we have shorter setbacks. So that's a little bit of a, of a trip frankly for me. Um, the other items I think are more procedural. I'd like to see, I, I have confidence that staff can, um, in conjunction with the developer, fix, uh, some of those items. But that 35 foot with the concept of the, of the squeezing in of space, we've done a lot of squeezing in this. But I also balance against, I'm giving a little my editorial and perspective for the audience too, on how I'm inclined to vote. I, I'm in generally in favor of it being developed because I think it was a, a dog of a property before. It's been a long time eyesore in the community, as long as I've lived here, it's looked terrible. And this, something like this is better than what it's been. I don't believe it has a significant impact on the quality of the bike path. I ride the bike path a lot and there's a lot of beautiful areas and I don't think I'm going to want to throw up when I go past this. I just, you know, that's graphic, but I don't think that's the case. I don't think we're ruining it, we're not, there's ample things for wildlife, I mean, everybody likes to be sensitive with that. But a developer also has a right to develop property. And to say he can't do it because we don't want to get rid of the trees, we don't want to disturb the animals, we like the beautiful view from the bike path, well then, you know, it's coarse again, but then go by the property, you know? Uh, he's got a right to develop it, so somewhere in there, we've got to find a balance that works for everybody within the rules that we're given to work with. And that's, that's what I'm struggling to put in the bag and come out with a good, uh, decision on right now that, that makes it work as best as possible for everybody.
It seems like with, you know, not quite enough space in between and not quite enough, um, you know, setback and not quite enough, um, parking spaces, that the plan kind of needs to change. You know, to, to maybe another townhouse or one less apartment building or something like within the site plan needs more time and processing.
And then the question, does that kill the deal? So yeah, Chris, go ahead, you want to input to?
Well, yeah, it seems like we're getting hung up or on this front setback thing and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but basically there's two options that you guys came up with based on that middle road thing. Either at 50 feet, no berm, 35 feet with a berm. Okay, we went 35 feet with the berm, they said, don't put a berm there. So we did what they asked, right? So now I'm saying, hey, we'll just put a berm there, but we're going to have a break in it because you wanted the front doors and the sidewalks, no big deal, we can still have a berm. So that's taken care of, 35 feet with a berm, that's done. Parking space is no big deal. We're showing nine foot spaces, we can go down to, I think, eight feet even in Bettendorf, but we wouldn't, wouldn't want to. It's just not a comfortable space, we go down to eight and a half, let's say it, 200 spaces, you're going to save yourself 50 feet somehow. You know what I mean? So we can gain, gain spaces, I mean, that's, that's simple, super simple fix. Now the building spacing thing, that is news to me actually tonight, so that is a little more difficult. Now Mike might have known about it, my guy that works on it all the time, so I'm not trying to throw anybody on the bus here, but that is a little more difficult, but still doable. So to me, there's one, one item, that's it. And that's, I, I know we're getting hung up on that front setback thing, we just corrected it right there, we'll just put a berm in and be done.
Okay.
Wasn't safe, I thought.
Study said not to do that.
Is the, um, distance between buildings, that's not new language in our code. That's existing code, right? I was just saying they didn't know this before tonight, I mean, it's.
That's existing code. So again, our reviews are, are iterative, you know? So we're looking at these things from multiple angles. We're going to find in any site development plan that comes before us, I guarantee every one of them will have things that were missed and then they get found in later review process, whether that's at the building phase, um, or the, the, um, engineering phase. You know, those things happen and get caught. Um, you have about 11 feet of five, on a five acre site. You need about 11 feet on a five acre site.
I need a motion to move, if you want to input, I'm, I'm calling the last call for the audience, short one. I'm on way overtime and based on zero pay, that's a lot of money. I'm on way overtime and based on zero pay, that's a lot of money.
Understood and acknowledge all that.
But when you go to buy a house, you haven't inspected and then if you find termites, you don't buy the house, right?
You get the exterminator, one of the two, yeah.
But you know what I'm saying, so, so as you do an inspection and realize there are problems, then maybe you make a different choice. And I think what we're seeing here is there are problems, maybe we need to make a different choice.
I guess the question in your, in your analogy, is it a big enough termite to worry about? So that's what we're trying to figure out, so, you know.
That's kind of where I am, Mr. Chairman. I think we're getting hung up on some emotions here. I think the facts show that we've looked at a lot of the issues here. There's a couple of things that have to be worked out. Doesn't strike me as anything that's out of the ordinary. That's, that's my, my view on this. I think we've put the, we've looked at this three times now. And we've set out what our requirements are. And I think for the most part, they've been satisfied. I agree with the engineer that the separation has to be worked out, but I'm confident that staff can do that.
Did not that study say that not to put a berm in?
No, it did not. That is coming from our staff. So if the berm did go in, I can guarantee you, we're going to have to chop the last 30 to 50 feet off it just for a site triangle. That's city code, you cannot have a berm within 30 feet of the intersection.
Of the intersection, right.
That's where we're caught up in this-
Safety.
-conundrum between the two.
Brett, the question to you, based on what you've heard, are the issues that we're discussing outside the ordinary final negotiation stage before we get a-
The parking and, and berm or not, the building separation, it may just come down to, that footprint has to be slightly revised, which happens quite frequently with commercial buildings. The footprint that we actually approve in a site development plan is frequently different than the final architectural version that's submitted for a building plan. So if they can't, using that exact footprint, get that 11 feet that we're talking about, they may have to reduce the building size by a couple of feet to make that happen. Ultimately, they have to comply with that before it could be taken to city council, either way. If they submit something that doesn't work, then it doesn't go.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, but I would appreciate the opportunity for each one of us to make a comment before we vote.
Please do.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I vote that we approve case number 22-029, subject to the staff recommendations that we're not going to add to. And the ones we're going to add to are that the townhome buildings are separated properly. Apartment buildings are separated properly. We pick up the number of spots we need. And did I miss one?
The berm?
Well, I think the concern about the number of spots is that this is, the proposal is eight spots short or less than 4% requirement. The developer required, will require a variance from the board of adjustment due to the included open green space and landscaping included in the park staff. And parking lot staff will be recommending approval of a variance for reduced parking spaces. So if we actually think that they need those parking spaces, it sounds like we're not planning on doing them.
I just said that, here's, here's the motion. The motion is I approve with the exception of these three items. And that parking spot item would not be that they go to the board adjustments, it would be that they get it.
They meet the code.
They meet it?
They meet the code on that. So those, those three items, are there any other ones? Now the 35, that's a whole, that, that is at our discretion. I'm not proposing anything different at that right now, I just want an opportunity to comment before we vote. So there's the motion.
Is there any comment or anything in your-
Second the motion.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to make some comments.
Discussion on the motion in a second.
So fir-, first of all, I've been at this a long time. I've seen a lot of these come through here. And I've shaken my head, it's too much. And then they get put up and they end up looking nice and they end up working out, which is surprising to me. I think this is another one that appears to be too much. But when it's up built and because of the, the topography, it's going to look nice. The transportation issue, I share your concerns. I shared them before and that's hopefully one part of the reason there is a turn lane there. But if we built everything for safety, we wouldn't be driving around, we would only be able to walk. At some point, people need to be responsible for how they drive. And Devil's Plan is going to be a nightmare, it's, maybe it has to go down 25 miles an hour. I don't know, but we'll, we'll see on that. I am not, my, my recollection, how we got to 35 feet from, I, I'm not sure where that happened, kind of sounds like the city council might have made some suggestions on that because we only approved the zoning in the past. I actually, as I stated before, I think that the McNamara property that went up on Middle Road that looked terrible at first wasn't done. Once it was done, I didn't think it looked all that bad. Yes, it's close to the road, but I didn't think it looked all that bad. I agree with the 35 feet here, with the front doors facing out. I think that would be the more aesthetically pleasing look for people driving by versus the berm. So there's my comments. Oh, I will add one more. I am a little uncomfortable with the fact that we have so many, even though it's three, but it just seems like more items that aren't in the staff recommendations. That is more than we normally do, but it, it's still, it's all doable, as the engineer said. Now-
Well, because of what you said, it was why I was going to make a motion to postpone.
Understood.
So, I mean, there's, there's another option, you know, to give them time to correct it and we can look at it again when everything is corrected. I, I trust the staff, they do excellent work. It just seems like, like it would be a better choice at this point.
They will correct it as a condition to the approval.
Scott, I think you offered a very thoughtful approach to this by asking the developer, do you risk a down vote versus deferring? And I thought that was a very thoughtful idea. And, and my comments are not, not directed at staff and certainly not directed at the engineer, but the word you used, Scott, the word you used was sloppy. And there's, it just seems to be a longer list than what we would normally consider of conditions. And, and I would have been inclined, of course, to suggest deferring. And as the developer said too. If it, if it comes to that, if these are that easy to fix, then we take another look at it when things are tightened down and maybe a little clearer. And I say that without emotion, just fact. It doesn't fit what we're being read to, read, reading from here.
We've also just heard from staff that this isn't out of the ordinary to have this number of issues that they've worked out, so.
Scott, you offered a thoughtful choice and I think we're at a point now, that the choice has been made and we can move to vote then. The postpone idea is off the table, so.
So can I clarify that for a minute too? So from a procedural standpoint, we don't have Mr. Attorney sitting here tonight, but from a procedural standpoint, we have a motion and a second, we're having discussion. If we have a vote on that motion now and it fails, is that what goes to city council? We've lost the opportunity to postpone.
Yeah, I think that's correct. And I, the other question in my mind is, can the motion be rescinded? And I think it can be under Robert's rules, that the motion could be rescinded if, if in your discussion you've come up with other point of view, you know, discovered things, had questions answered. But I just, you know, without 100% clarity, you know, would say you need to deal with the motion that's on the, on the floor. And that, that could be rescind of that motion by the one that, by the one that made the motion, if that's where you're at. Did I answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
Would that require a vote to rescind? Does that require a vote or just I take it back?
I think it would just be him.
Okay.
So ju-, just thank you, yes it did, number one. Number two, my inclination at this point, although I agree that it could likely be fixed, I do agree there's some greater volume than we usually would see. And I would probably appreciate the opportunity to have everybody look at it one more time to see if there's anything that can be done to make it a little more palatable, whether that's density, the space, everything. We get one nice neat package and if everybody says, this is the best we can do, then our job is to say yea or nay on that. And I'm a little uncomfortable at saying it at this stage. And if the developer is still okay with a postpone, that would be my inclination because you've got a lot of time and effort put into this. You, in my opinion, have a right to develop your property. I don't think you're far from where it needs to be. It's a little heavy in my opinion, but I'll also, I'm going back and forth with you guys here. There's been a number of them that I look at after the fact. And two things say to me that, that they were okay. One, my own opinion is like, oh, it doesn't look too bad. And the other is they fill them with people at $2,000 a month. So the market says, I'm thrilled to have it. And we have a shortage of multifamily housing in this market. And this is a product that fits a need in the market. I take somewhat of offense and we've been offended before, but I've been called immoral and a moron and other things in this chair. But I think some people would take offense to the concept that because I, I pay rent, I'm somehow more of a criminal. And I, I think that's a wrong mindset to send and message to send. And I would disagree with that wholeheartedly and I wanted to say that on the record. At 2,000, and I don't know what your rent is, but everything around here has been 1,800 to 2,200 a month and everything we've heard, I don't think we're inviting criminals to town or sloppy people that are going to throw their beer bottles out the back. There's beer bottles in my neighborhood and I live in a pretty expensive neighborhood, so I, I would just add that editorial. So I'm inclined to be in favor of postponing for those reasons. I'd be inclined to vote against the current motion. But I wouldn't say by any means that I would be inclined to vote against this if it's tuned up and comes back a second or third time now. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, oh, sorry Scott.
I was just going to ask, last chance.
I, I, I want to, before, if I could, there's another procedural item I think you should just contemplate briefly, is that if you chose to rescind the motion that's on the table right now and then thought postponement was the way you were going to go, you could also make another motion to set a future meeting date in between your next meeting so that you have a, a shorter timeframe until you take this topic up again. So that would be a meeting that we'd have to meet the posting requirements and all that stuff for, so it's probably 10 or 14 days out, but it would be halfway between, if you will. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but not a month.
But not, but not, but not a whole month. And that lessens the delay if that pleases the commission. And you know, I'm really excited to come here again, so.
Yeah.
Another thoughtful approach, Mark, thank you. And if that were to fit the engineer's timeline, the developer's timeline, to make the changes, to tighten this down further, it seems like a compromise.
Would that delay the city council date? Would that push that out another two weeks?
You got, you got an August 2nd meeting and you've got an August, I'm sorry, if I may. You've got an August 2nd meeting, you've got an August 16th meeting. So math is getting harder at this hour. That's my music calendar here. So you could, if, yeah, you could probably still make the August 2nd meeting if this commission- 16th meeting, you don't think you can make the 2nd? Yeah, probably not, because you probably got to have 10 days' notice. So you could probably make the August 16th meeting and that, instead of waiting until September or October now, you're still going to get in front of commission. Should this have a, a recommendation at that point to go forward, you'd have an August 16th meeting, so.
Either way, right, Mark, whether we declined it or approved it, he'd still be to the same city council. Many think it's going to go for a city council super majority or vote.
Well, if this were, every, let's just take this case out of, of consideration. Everything we've approved tonight will be, will, it is my intention to submit those to the city administrator for inclusion on the August 2nd agenda. I don't set the city council agenda. But it would be my, my recommendation to the city administrator that they be considered on August 2nd.
You just have to be on the next city council for whatever we, all right.
And you have 10-day notice.
I, and I'm, again, I'm, you're, I'm trying to recall up state code in my mind and a little low on blood sugar. So I think, I think we can conservatively say you could rescind the motion that's on the table. You could make a motion to postpone. You could then make a motion to have a additional meeting, meeting the timeframe requirements required by state statute. And I think that would easily put this back in play for an August 16th city council review.
That feels less like we are kicking down-
Any comment before I decide which direction I'm going?
Financing is supposed to be August 17th, so it gives us one, one day to close on the financing. I'm not sure if the lender-
I think you're saying that I'm going to- I am going to rescind my motion. And if it pleases the panel here, I'm going to put in a motion to postpone. And hopefully schedule an interim meeting.
I think those might be two separate motions.
To rescind your motion, okay. I rescind the motion.
Now you're going to make a motion to postpone.
Unless somebody wants to second it.
Probably to vote on that.
Do we vote? Well, I rescinded it, so there we go.
Yeah. I don't think that requires a vote.
So then now make your motion.
You did.
Motion, I'll second your motion to postpone.
We have a motion and a second to postpone. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, motion to postpone is approved.
And then Mr. Chairman will make a motion to recon, do you say reconsider in two weeks or?
Special meeting to reconsider.
We'll have to leave that up to the city staff to schedule a meeting.
Adequate timeframes.
And hopefully either of the two members in the commission have a full-
That would help too.
Have a full commission discussion.
Yeah. Good point. So we have a second for that?
A special meeting, is that where we're at?
We have a motion and a second for a special meeting to accommodate the timeframe and hopefully the other two members, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay. That is approved. Okay. We're now, do we have a staff update or do you just want to go home?
I surrender.
I surrender.
All right. We are adjourned.